West Orange and to our honored guests here tonight, welcome to our April 9th Township Council Conference Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you read the opening statement, please?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Corino.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all my colleagues for being here tonight. We have a great presentation, two great presentations tonight. The first one is to honor members of Seton Hall for a great act of kindness and saving an individual's life and taking it upon themselves to do what was right, not thinking about themselves, but actually taking the time to do it. And the family of the person, of the woman, is very appreciative and so is the township of West Orange Administration and Township Council. So, to move it along, I'd like to, I'm gonna go over to the podium and I will call up individuals who are here tonight and thank them personally for their service to the township of West Orange. Thank you. I'd like to also thank, of course, Monsignor Kelly for being here. Thank you, Monsignor, for being here. It's always a pleasure to see members of the Seton Hall community, and we always like honoring members of the Seton Hall community who are true members of the West Orange community. So, we have three certificates tonight of appreciation by the township of West Orange. One is to Mr. James Bradley, and one is to Mr. Thomas Ronnie. If I pronounce your names wrong, you can yell at me when you come up here. And also to Mark Smith. So, I'd like to call up the members of Seton Hall to come up. Monsignor, if you'd like to come up, you can come up also, sir, if you'd like to. Mr. Gallo, if you'd like to come up too, sir?
Monsignor, I'm ready.
And Mons, absolutely. We're all one big happy face. Thank you for being here this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll pick one of you out who can describe the whole situation, and so it falls by. But, there's a certificate for each one of you, and, of course, the Township Council and the mayor are very grateful, and I'm sure the entire West Orange community is grateful. So, certificate of appreciation, presented by the township of West Orange to each one of you. The certificate is awarded in grateful acknowledgement and appreciation for courage and service to the Yurakoli family of Seton Hall Prep on February 28, 2019, respectfully presented by, in respect for Mayor Robert D. Perici, mayor of the township of West Orange. So, I thank each and every one of you, and so you're gonna give the... Okay, okay. Which one is, which one is Mark?
I have.
Mark, congratulations, sir, thank you. You wear little lame hats and everything else. Thomas?
That's right.
Thank you, sir, congratulations. And you must be James.
Thank you very much.
I'd like, why don't you just really briefly explain what happened, if you could, so the residents and the family members of our township could understand why we're doing this.
I was trying to, you were the first, I just followed you. All right, we were, we were outside dismissing students, and we were flagged down by a freshman who was walking by a vehicle and found an unconscious woman who had apparently suffered a seizure. She had, she had blood on her jacket, and she was, she was unconscious, she had no vitals. Problem is, the door was locked. The doors were locked to her vehicle, and it was running. Several students, I myself, we attempted to gain entry, and I ended up smashing the rear window, going in, Mark Smith, and another unidentified male, who I don't know where he came from, but they dragged her out of the vehicle, because the vehicle was filled with toxic fumes. At that point, we didn't even know what it was, but it burned my mouth and eyes. Immediately, I told Mark, I said, "There's fumes, you know, get her out." They pulled her out, and she was, she didn't have any signs of life at that point. And through quick acting and fresh air, sternum rubs, we managed to bring her back. Turns out, she was transporting cookie dough packed in dry ice.
Oh, wow.
Dry ice. I still don't know exactly how, but it leaked in the car, and you could see the fumes coming out of the box. And she was overcome in a matter of about 40 minutes, from the time she picked it up to the time we gained entry. She was, she was out. And I wanna thank God for, just the way the events happened that day, and for being there, and with the proper support staff. And she's fine today. Just wanna, you know, thank everybody here.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much again.
Take care, my.
Bye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
God bless.
Thank you again to the Seton Hall community and to Monsignor Kelly. It's always, this is one of the best parts of the job of being a councilman and a councilperson, is to thanking the residents and even non-residents who take the extra time to make our township such a great place and to look after our residents. Next on our agenda is a presentation, April is National Donate Life Month. Is Mr. Didadio here?
Denise, Denise Peoples.
Is she here?
Yep.
Oh. You want to, sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this over to Councilwoman McCartney.
I don't know if that's for that.
I'm sorry?
Did you look at that? I don't think that's for that. I think if there's just the presentation, that's for something else.
This is distracted driving.
Right.
Thank you. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Denise.
I have a proclamation. So, let me just introduce, right? April is Donate Life Month, and since my daughter was 17 years old, she just turned 30, but since my daughter was 17 years old, our story is that she was, went for an eye exam, and as I waited, it was taking hours, and I kept going in and checking, and they kept saying they weren't done, they weren't done. I thought it was just a routine, eyeglasses. It turned out she had a condition called kerakotonus, which I didn't even know how to spell, and there was no literature in the doctor's office to explain what kerakotonus. I didn't really know what I was looking for. And it was a misshapen cornea. And at 17 years old, she had cornea transplants. And, and you all know, the last thing you should do is Google something about a procedure, and, of course, I didn't heed that advice, and I found out that what the doctor was going to do was 88 stitches around each cornea, and you could actually see the knots, and, and to this day, though, I am so grateful that someone had donated cornea for my, for my daughter. So, and, yeah, so that's why this meant so much to me, and we have this, I have this little write-up that says that one organ donor can save up to eight lives, and one tissue donor can restore health to over 75 people. Over 115,000 men and women across the country are on the organ donor list, according to the United Network for Organ Sharing. According to the New Jersey Sharing Network, over 4,000 of those live here in New Jersey. New Jersey Sharing Network is a nonprofit organization responsible for the recovery and placement of donated organ and tissue for those in need of life-saving transplant. And, of course, there's more information at New Jersey Sharing Network. So, with that, I really wanted to introduce Denise Peoples. We really never met, it's just exchanged a lot of emails, and I was glad to coordinate it on this day that she can come in April, because April is Donate Life Month. So, please, Denise, say, say a few words for us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Denise Peoples, and I am a hospital and community service coordinator for the New Jersey Sharing Network. And it is true, we are the organization that is federally designated here for the state of New Jersey to procure organs and tissues for transplantation. All 55 hospitals have to report to us when they have an intimate passing. And, yes, one person can save up to eight lives, which is amazing, and restore a person 75-plus with tissue. We have so many initiatives at the Sharing Network. We're located in New Providence, New Jersey. I think that you all should come on a field trip and come visit us. It's a beautiful place where amazing things happen, and I'm a witness that amazing things happen there, because 12 years ago, I received a double lung transplant, and I have been great ever since. And it was because of the hard work of organizations like the New Jersey Sharing Network that saved my life. And there is no greater gift than the gift of life, and we are so proud and happy that we are receiving this tonight, and it's no better time, it's Donate Life Month, which is a month where we just celebrate those who gave and those who are waiting, and the families of those who consented, because it's not an easy thing, and it's a very selfless act, and it's wonderful. My family can attest to it, and so can I, and so can you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Is there any, any questions or anything that we need to know? It was really just to raise awareness, so people know what to do.
Ms. Peoples, if, Ms. Peoples, if somebody wants to get more information or wants to actually volunteer, what's, what process should, should they use?
They can go to our website, newjerseysharingnetwork.org, and all of the information is there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I also have a telephone number here, too, 908-516-5400, newjerseysharingnetwork.org. All right, thanks. Thanks, sir. Oh, sure, all right, Joe, you're still up.
Okay. Thank you. Now I go back to my, thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Back, our next proclamation for this month, and I'll do it from here, but, is supporting the 2019 "You Drive, You Text, You Pay" distracted driving crackdown, which will go through from April 1st through April 21st. This is a statewide crackdown on, with our police department being funded in part to move forward and to ticket distracted drivers, especially our youth drivers and people not paying attention to the road, and that's how accidents do happen, when you're distracted from what you should really be doing. So, proclamation, 2019, "You Drive, You Text, You Pay," distracted driving crackdown, April 1st to April 21st, 2019. Whereas distracted driving is a serious, life-threatening practice that is preventable, and whereas distracted driving can result in injuries and deaths to all road users, motorists, pedestrians, bicyclists, and whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers divert their attention away from the task of driving to focus on another activity instead, and whereas in 2016 alone, distracted driving-related crashes resulted in 3,450 deaths and 391,000 injuries on our nation's roads, and whereas in New Jersey, distracted driving was listed as a contributing circumstance in 53% of all motor vehicle crashes in 2016. And whereas the state of New Jersey will participate in the Nationwide Distracted Driving 2019 Crackdown from April 1st to April 21st, 2019, in an effort to raise awareness and decrease driver distraction through a combination of enforcement and education. And whereas, the national slogan for the campaign is "You Drive, You Text, You Pay", and whereas, reduction in distracted driving in New Jersey will save lives on our roadways. Therefore, be it resolved that the township of West Orange declares support for the Distracted Driving 2019 Crackdown both locally and nationally from April 1st to April 21st, 2019, and pledges to increase awareness of the dangers of distracted driving, so proclaimed in Representative Mayor Robert D. Perici, mayor of the township of West Orange, April 9th, 2019. So, let's all use this as a good way to save lives and to reduce the number of crashes on our roadways, especially our young drivers, and that's what we do through our education programs in the school and through many organizations, particularly the Nikhil Badlani Foundation. So, let's use what's given to us and move ahead on this, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Updates on redevelopment. Mr. Business Administrator, any updates to redevelopment?
Well, as you all know, everything's going well down there. I had a conversation with the redevelopment developer at the beginning of the week, actually, the end of last week, I'm sorry. Phase 2 is hopefully going to be the, the information on phase 2, they're, the engineers are working on that, and they said they're looking for about another three weeks before they can submit that information to us, so we're waiting for that. And obviously, they're still renting units and building them.
Any, any percentages of the increased rentals?
Oh, yes, I did, I got that. I talked to them about that. When did I write that down? Let's see. Okay, 115 signed leases as of Friday, and actual tenants were 99.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. Actual tenants were 99, and the leases, the, the actual leases that are signed are 115.
And just to correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time we, our last council meeting, there were like 70 tenants in the, in the development at that time?
Yeah, and it was just about a little bit over 100.
So, within a matter of two weeks, there are now 29 more residents, and, very good. Any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Service?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So, I thought the number was higher, 'cause I spoke with Ted from the leasing office a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
So, I connected him with Mr. Lapore in regards to them getting ready for their jitney run, to, to start getting that together, and I thought they were up to like 158. I thought they were like at the, almost at the number where they needed to implement the jitney on their end.
I was told on Friday, when I spoke to them, those were the numbers he gave me. I mean, I wrote it down, unless I, unless I misunderstood what he said, I'll double-check it tomorrow.
Yeah, 'cause I, I thought they were like at 158 in the building, unless that was my, 'cause he was ready to have conversations, and Mr. Lapore was gonna give him a call, so they could start, okay. Okay, 'cause I think once they implement that, and, you know, we had a good conversation in regards to them implementing that service, I think that's gonna fill up their, their units a lot quicker, knowing that it's already stopping there, and it's, now the residents can take advantage of that now, as opposed to down the road.
Right.
So, okay.
I'll, I'll double-check tomorrow, but those were the numbers I believe he gave me on Friday.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. To that point, too, I really don't think the, the number matters, because during the planning application, though we didn't condition the jitney, we were told that if there was a demand, they would supply jitney.
Yeah.
So, I don't think the numbers matter, because we already know that there is a, a demand there from the conversations that we've had there. So, I think, you know, time to move on setting that up.
Yeah, they were.
There was, there's something in, in that agreement that said they had to have a certain amount of boxes before we could do the jitney.
Half, half the building.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what that number was.
Oh, we're close then, good.
Yeah, they're close.
Good.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman?
Any updates on the commercial real estate?
Believe it or not, I, he, he's been very, very coy with that, with me. But he did say to me that, he says he was hoping that the, the Rock Spring project goes through, because he wants to buy that liquor license, because he does have a client who wants to come in there with the liquor license. But he will not, he has not mentioned to me who the, who they are, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman, any questions?
Uh, no. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for those numbers.
Yeah, no problem.
Council Liaison, Councilwoman Castellino?
Sure. Have a bunch of them tonight. So, in regards to, I'll start off with the school district, 'cause I'm the liaison for the, for the, with the school district. Starting, all you high school parents, starting Monday, April 22nd, the high school, if you're dropping off your child at West Orange High School, there will be a new traffic pattern. The high school, the officials have been working with our police department in regards to two drop-off spots. You'll be able to drop off your student in the back of the school on Conforty, no longer going down that driveway, and in the front of Pleasant Valley Way. There's always been that left turn sig, a no-left turn signal out of the Pleasant Valley Way driveway, and that will be, you know, enforced as it should be, and you can only make a right-hand turn out the top of Pleasant Valley Way when you exit the high school drop-off. So, beware of that, I know the school district has been sending out notice, notifications. In regards to that, I was, been working with Chief Abbott and the district in regards to, cop, cops grant is up. So, the school district had done a security study on the entire district in regards to needs in the buildings and their facilities, in regards to securing down all of their buildings. So, that report is back. We're gonna be working with our grant writer, Catherine Capora. The grant has to come through the township, so we'll work with them, writing it for them. They're gonna identify their needs, and so hopefully, we'll be applying for that within the month, and they'll be able to get some much-needed security infrastructure equipment that they need for not only the high school, but for the entire district. So, I'll keep you noted on that. The high school, also I wanna thank Ms. Catherine Connors, Mr. Lou Quagliata, and Vice Principal Mancarella in regards to working with the student council and our senior citizens department, and here in the township. Our residents, about 90 of them, went to see Mamma Mia last Thursday night. The high school presented a wonderful performance I got to see it Friday night. Our talented students really outdid theirselves each year. The students just amazed me with their talent, their singing, their dancing, and even the creativity with the, with the arts department and the stage set. So, congratulations on them, on a great show, and thank you for providing a free show for our seniors. And transportation, the school district picked our seniors up, our residents up, and they'll be picking them up again tomorrow, 'cause tomorrow, tomorrow at West Orange High School is the senior citizen prom that the student council provides our residents every year, and that's another great event, and I just wanna thank the district for those two events. And later on, when we get to resolution, I, we will have Partners for Health. We, very exciting that we, we received the Senior Livability Coordinator Position Grant, and I'll explain that a little bit later. I thought I'd have two weeks to get some information together for you, but Partners for Health needed us to vote on this this evening, so when we get to that part on the resolution, I'll be more than happy to go over the grant. But, just very exciting that we can move forward with our, our needs for our senior population here in the township. Also, there's a change order for the township pool. It's another, it ties into another grant that we're trying to get for our residents, and I'll go into that when we get to that resolution. And in regards to West Orange Recreation Department, a few announcements, next Thursday night, April 19th, having their annual spring fling for the holiday season at Liberty Middle School. There's a magic show for the kids, and, of course, the bunny will be on hand greeting them as well. So, that's next Thursday night at Liberty Middle School. Pool passes, you could get the early bird pass if, by, you could just log on to Community Pass on the West Orange Recreation website and sign up for a township pool earlier before May 9th, and you'll get the early bird discount. And, let's see, and I just wanna thank Mr. Keo, Edwin Johnson, and our former school board member, Ron Charles. I attended a meeting for the special needs playground. As you recall, this past November, our residents voted on four projects that were on the ballot, and the special needs playground was identified as a project, capital-proven pro, project. So, that will be getting built sometime this fall, and great input from our parents. Many of them showed up to just, you know, look at the different needs and how to create a much-needed playground for our residents, and that playground will be built at, at O'Connor Park, up in the Mount Pleasant, behind Mount Pleasant School in that area, which is a great, great location for that project. And, that's it. Council President?
Thank you.
All good, thank you.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Thank you. Just, just short announcements I have. I, one of my very good friends, who is a parent advocate for students with special needs, will be hosting her third annual fundraiser in honor of Autism Awareness Month. It's a paint and sip, it's a BYOB paint and sip, it is a lot of fun. All the proceeds go to PASS, which gives out scholarship awards to students in special education needs at the high school who are graduating this year. Last year, we raised $3,000, and we're hoping to raise a little bit more. So, for, for more information, if you look at Gina Velasquez on Facebook, or if you catch me right after this, or send me a private message, I'll give you the information. It is a lot of fun, you don't have to be an artist to participate, so please do look forward to your support, thanks. Also, the Alliance Club of West Orange Annual Spaghetti Dinner is being held April 24th, and they have contributed a lot of assistance and raising awareness when it comes to those who unfortunately suffer, suffer and are visually impaired or blind. They also collect a lot of funds from this to help our students from the high schools, along with a lot of other projects that they have, have a safe graduation night. If you're not aware, the high school seniors don't go out and have a big party independently of one another, but they get on a bus and they go to a big, is it still, around 10?
Funplex.
Funplex, for the evening, so they're kinda like party locked in. So, this would also help to raise funds for that. And that dinner is on Wednesday, April 24th, $10 per person, from 5:30 to 8 at the West Orange High School. And, I don't see rosary here, but I did wanna acknowledge for Women's History Month, I know it just passed, but I was able to attend an event held by the Senior Citizens Volunteer Corporation in East Orange, who honored SS County residents and senior citizen advocates. It was an amazing event to watch some incredible women get recognized for their efforts in advocacy and volunteer work within the senior community, so I just want, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Picking up where Cindy just mentioned with this Lions Club, and a lot of businesses around town and here in Town Hall, the Lions Club- town and here in Town Hall, the Lions Club provides boxes for recycled glasses that they also donate to the charitable organizations that they work with. So, if you do have old glasses, they can be recycled and put to good use. Couple things, the, let me see, the West Orange Arts Council is April 1st through April 28th. They're having an exhibit of Rosario de Rivera. This is entitled "Introspection." This would be at the West Orange Art Center located at 551 Valley Road here in West Orange, and music, and an examination of one's own conscious thoughts and feelings relies exclusively on observing one's mental state while in a spiritual context. So, we invite everyone to enjoy the exhibit between April 1st and April 28th, and the artist reception will be on April 13th from 3 to 6. It's for the art center. The Chamber is having their annual community awards dinner. That will be on Monday, May 13th, and at this annual event, we recognize a firefighter, a police officer, educator of the year, and a business of the year that have contributed to community service. That's on May 13th from 6 to 9. Please visit westorangechamber.org for more information about that. The West Orange Environmental Commission also just applied for a grant in conjunction with the Open Space Commission, an ANJAC grant. ANJAC is the Association of New Jersey of Environmental Commissions. They are, well, the Open Space Commission and the Environmental Commission collaborate on six acres that the Open Space Commission purchased a few years ago on Mount Pleasant Avenue, and they are, they have a landscape architect that has designed a variety of eight different gardens. So, this grant will help to, to help with that plan. They've already planted 600 trees, I think 500 trees the first year, two years ago with the grant, to 100 last year, and now they're working on invasive species and meadows and wildflowers. Should be very beautiful, and we're adding out to our classroom space and workshop space. The Environmental Commission also annually has an Arbor Day celebration. This year, it's going to be on Friday, April 12th. It will be at Liberty Middle School because we are planting the tree in memory of Susan Zakaro, who taught for 27 years in the West Orange Public School District. She passed away last spring after a battle with leukemia. She was nominated several times for Teacher of the Year and received a 2018 Community Service Award for her work throughout the district. So, that will be on April 12th at 2:00 p.m. at Liberty Middle School. And very touching, also Liberty Middle School, the day before, on April 11th, again, and everyone is welcome to attend, on April 11th at 3 o'clock, West Orange High School students that had Susan Zakaro in their science class when they were at Liberty are going up there to plant a tree in her memory as well. So, it's just a very respectful memorial service.
Yes.
What else, one more? Oh, this one, this is coming together nicely. This is again with the West Orange, excuse me, Environmental Commission. We are partnering with Second Chance Toys. So, on April 28th, Sunday afternoon, from 1 to 4, it's a free event. We're asking people to donate clean plastic toys to keep them out of landfill, and the Second Chance Toys Organization has been in existence for about 12 years, and they are affiliated with many charitable organizations. So, all the toys that will be donated at this event, they will put them to good use. So, Second Chance Recycling Plastic Toys, April 28th, it's at Ospac on, off of Prospect Avenue on Boland Drive, from 1 to 4, Sunday afternoon, April 28th. That's it.
Do you want to talk about the open space tour around town that we had two weeks ago? Or let Joe do it?
I was actually going to throw it out to you because there's a couple of council people, I think, that attended the bus tour of the open spaces here in town. I was going to toss it over, but.
Okay.
Counsel President, no, you've cut me the chase. I was unable to attend, so.
Right. Well, it was a wonderful event, weather cooperated. This was, my husband Joe happens to be the Chair of the Open Space Commission, and he organized, well, because we are undergoing the master plan, reexamination of the master plan, the Open Space Commission has commissioned the Land Conservancy to update their roster of open space in town. So, what, between the representative from Land Conservancy, Barbara Davis, my husband Joe, Lenny Laporte, they put together a list of all of what is currently on our open space roster, and we used the shuttle in town on a Saturday morning to visit all of these sites. It was well-attended. We filled a bus, and no, and just the idea of seeing what's out there and the potential of other properties that could be saved. So, it's all part of the master plan, the reexamination. We need input from the Historic Preservation Commission, Joe, so that I am going to throw back over to you, that the, in the master plan, there's a historic preservation element, and the Land Conservancy is looking for information on that. That just came in today.
I believe there was another council person who also attended that tour, and maybe she wants to.
There were three of us, and I have to, yeah, there was three of us, and I have to say that I was so excited to have, set my alarm clock early for Saturday morning. My alarm clock usually goes off 4:30 every day, so sleeping until 9 is a treat, but this is an even bigger treat because I was able to actually appreciate what the Open Space Commission does, has done, and continues to do. I'm happy to see that, you know, this tour was put together and made accessible to so many of us. I'm very excited to have learned of places that I didn't know were open space, but now when you pay closer attention, there's actually signs that say green acres, funds. I understand better what that is, and I also appreciate the work that they've done to make sure that they maintain our open spaces where they need to be. So, if this is scheduled again, and I think it would be beneficial to do, I hope more people participate because it was really a great learning experience.
Counselwoman?
Yes, thank you. There is some other news other than that for the Open Space Committee. One of the things we've identified in a recent meeting is that we want to have a new name for the open space property at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue, the property formerly known as The Rock. As Counselwoman mentioned, we're actually adding a lot of organics to the site, and so we're looking to come up with a new name. So, if anybody has any thoughts about names, please, you can send your ideas to council@westorange.org, or you can come to an upcoming Open Space meeting. The next tentative meeting is scheduled for May 1st, but I'm not sure whether that's confirmed or not, so keep watching the town calendar, and when I figure this out, I'll announce it at the next council meeting. The West Orange Historic Preservation Commission is, has recently identified several properties in town that, as candidates for adding to the West Orange Register of Historic Places, including several properties along Main Street and also the State Diner down on Valley Road. And so, we'll see how those solicitations go. The property owners have to actually agree to join the register because, and the properties are put under some restrictions as to what you can do for your external, the external part of your property. It has to maintain the historic character. So, everybody that we ask to join the register doesn't always, doesn't always agree to it. We also have the most recent phase of our survey of historic properties here in town that was funded by the most recent state grant, so that's underway. The Historic Preservation Commission recently approved the renovation plans for the rectory building at the former St. Mark's Church on Main Street, so the improvements and repairs there are continuing. The meeting for Historic Preservation Commission tomorrow was canceled. The next meeting is May 14th, 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. Counsel President?
Thank you, Counselwoman. Yes, Counselwoman, sure.
I forgot that we did meet last Monday at the Rent a House, also the senior housing building right behind us here, and applications are still coming in and are still available if residents in the complex would like a walk-in tub. So, please go to the office, right? I think that's a great thing. So, please go to the office if you would like to fill out an application for a walk-in tub at the Rent a House.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, my colleagues. Okay. Just like the update, you know, Downtown Alliance, our first Farmer's Market will be May 18th on a Saturday in the parking lot here at 80 Main, and I hope you'll come down. Please visit the website for specific times, and there's supposed to be some great vendors, some two new farmers, so it should be a really, really good adventure. And so, we hope everybody gets down. There's going to be plenty of parking, and we hope to see you all down here on Main Street for the first Farmer's Market. Next thing I'd talk about is something that's been very, very good in a lot of people's minds, is the safety improvements at Essex Green. I'm not going to show these tonight because these are for the zoning board meeting on Thursday night, but I will go over the enhancements. Everything the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board asked for has been agreed to and is incorporated in the plans. So, we are getting these enhancements. And I just want to throw out the thank you to Mike Damon Miller, Lori Caffener, Sangina Badlani, Sunil Badlani, and Roz Moskowitz. We all got together, our core group, and we put these down. We sat with the architect, we sat with the planners, and the developer has agreed to do these improvements. And these are great improvements for the safety of the residents and the drivers, and it's really, really important. And I'm going to read just a few of the ones that they've, that they've agreed to. Adding new striping for crosswalks adjacent to ShopRite from ADA Parking, adjacent to the lower level shops. Edit crosswalk ramps and signage to courtyard by Marriott. Revised sidewalk connecting Prospect Avenue to the shopping center at the main driveway to connect directly to the existing ramp and crosswalks on Prospect Avenue rather than to the bus shelter. Reduce the proposed curb radius turning right in front of Building B, which is in the front when you come in, to slow down the traffic and entering traffic, but also enable emergency vehicles to get in. Extended the sidewalk and added a crosswalk ramp and signage to the LA Fitness Office Building driveway. Shifted proposed sidewalk and ramp to cross Rooney Circle and Marion Drive aligned with the applicant paying for a solar-powered crossing light. Add a crosswalks from lower-level Building C to lower-level Building B. Add a truck route signage to Prospect Avenue Rooney Circle to direct deliveries to use Rooney Circle and not the main driveway into the development. Add a truck delivery signage to main entrance, all truck delivery to Rooney Circle intersection 600 feet ahead. So, I'm very excited, and so is my board, that we've been able, working in conjunction with the developer, on a positive and on a cooperative way, we've accomplished, and we got things that we feel will make the area safer, particularly for drivers and pedestrians, and to guarantee that it's in the plans which are required by law, that the revisions have been added, and I'll show these tomorrow, and we have the new plans that what's been committed to will be done. So, I really want to do a shout-out to my Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. It's a great board. Our meeting is tomorrow night at the Essex County Educational Center located at Turtleback Zoo. It's at 7:30. It's in Room 3 on the first level, and of course, we thank the county for continued access to that facility. And that's all I have to say. So, thank you. We have Mr. Fagan would like to make a presentation now. That's quite all right. Madam Clerk?
Should I set the clock?
I know. I know it's 7:16, but.
Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and I will be very brief. I have information up here to add to the crackdown on distracted driving. Other than what was said, I just want to point out that 207 police departments around New Jersey are participating, and that was funded by a $1 million grant. And although distracted driving, and we're probably all guilty of it at times, is often associated with Texan, there's several other criteria that constitutes distracted driving, such as, and it's fairly obvious, reading, using a navigation system, watching a video, adjusting a radio CD player. So, it's, the next three weeks are certainly important, but distracted driving is a year-round issue. I also wanted to talk about the Arbor Day Celebration that was mentioned. That's this Friday, and it should take on profound significance as a tree will be planted in Susan Zakaro's memory. And finally, excuse me, one thing I would like to talk about very briefly is the West Orange Honor Roll Initiative, and I have, I've given you all information on that, and there's information up here about that. The West Orange Honor Roll, which is located right outside the door here on the first-floor corridor, was dedicated on May 30th, 1944, and it lists in alphabetical order all the names of West Orange residents who served in World War II. Only about 850,000 World War II veterans still remain, still survive nationwide, and it's estimated that we're losing about 492 per day. As the remaining veterans slowly stroll towards a setting sunset, their individual names and stories may soon be forgotten. The West Orange Honor Roll Initiative seeks to remember and preserve the stories of more than 3,600 West Orange residents who are listed on the Honor Roll. The information collected is intended to become part of a permanent database to help tell the story of New Jersey's most decorated community for all future generations. The stories of our local veterans are an important part of West Orange history, but risk fading into oblivion if not documented. The names include numerous relatives, such as brothers and cousins, and there are two father and sons listed on the Honor Roll. One is my father and grandfather, so I am aware of the sacrifice that has been made by the families of the veterans. So, I'd like to appeal to the public, to all surviving West Orange veterans and their families, to tell their story. Although the main focus of this project is those names listed on the West Orange Honor Roll, the stories of any West Orange veteran from any war are welcome, specifically looking for wartime photographs, stories, and a little bit about their background, but specifically the most important thing would be to find pictures. We have a window of opportunity while families and veterans, to some degree, are still around, but this window will soon close, and their stories risk being lost forever. As I say, I have information up here on that, and I've given you all information about it, so please pass it through your various networks, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4th, 2018. Counselwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Kukovia?
Present.
Counselwoman Matude Brown?
Present.
Counselwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Carino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Township of West Orange. Welcome to our April 9th Township Council Public Meeting. Like to start off the meeting with public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the Township Council, please raise your hand when you come up. When you come up, do me a favor. Spell your name and your address so we clearly get it, so we know exactly who we're talking to. So, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
March.
Yes, March. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. This week.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, March Mingen.
Thank you.
And I'm representing the public library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This week, our nation celebrates the importance and the value of our free public libraries, and here in West Orange, our public library is recognized for its vital role within our community. If you had a copy of last Thursday's Chronicle, the editorial was excellent, which talked about libraries have been around since the beginning of time, millennia, and all of the things that they're, you know, they do throughout the ages. One thing is clear, they serve people and people's needs. Today happens to be National Library Workers and Volunteers Day, and the Friends of the Library had a luncheon for these people, recognizing the tasks that they perform to make things work for all of our patrons. And it was very inspiring. And it was very inspiring. I always really enjoy spending a day talking to these people who volunteer their time. They come from all areas of our community. They have all varying reasons and skills, but yet they all feel they have an obligation to serve, and that's very inspiring. And just look at your council members. They're all very inspiring in the hard work that they do, and of course, the administration. West Orange is a fabulous place to live. I've been here for 30 years, and I never get tired of talking to the people who reside here. It's really very, it's interesting, and we see a lot of that, the walks of life throughout the library. If one stops to think about many people who have influenced our lives, it's almost impossible to really put a list together. Certainly, our families, maybe our pastors, maybe teachers, maybe our coworkers, and our friends. And each one has added a unique glare to our interaction and frame the way we live and who we are. We also, we think about our safety, we think about our policemen, but we also think, what about a police officer who stopped us for speeding and just gave us a warning instead of a ticket? Or a fireman who, you know, came to see if you had all of your fire codes up to what they should be, and said, you know, "You really need to change this, but I'm gonna, you know, as long as you do it, I'm gonna let you go." So what about librarians, and what about libraries? As I said before, on any given day, you will see our residents interacting with our librarians and interacting with the materials that we have in the library, and how they all affect the value of their lives. Maybe somebody's checking out the latest novel, or maybe the DVD that was just released. Getting help with their taxes. We're just closing up the year with taxes. We've had many, many of our residents served in that capacity. We also had, just completed a series on how to use Microsoft's series, and I saw a person struggling to set up an Excel spreadsheet. I also saw today, somebody's, a group of people with a game of Scrabble, which I thought was very interesting, learning new words. How about attending a piano or jazz concert, or viewing a current gallery showing, or helping with your ancestry, and possibly even doing a job search? We also have people who volunteer to deliver to the homebound and to help children learn the classics at storytime. All of this is for no cost, and yet so much. So I guarantee at some point of your life, whether it was in elementary school, or even in college, or maybe as a senior citizen, that you've had an intersection with libraries and librarians. One of the things that I thought was very inspiring, too, we offer classes for the ESL, people who are learning to speak English. And I spoke to a group gathered today, and they spoke so highly of the value that they're getting from this, being taught by a volunteer. And also, people who are learning to become citizens, and they're there also. So it's really great. One of the things that we're doing this time in the library is, we're having an amnesty. So if you owe any money on books, or you've lost your card, you don't have to pay, but what we're asking for is that you bring some non-perishable food, and we're going to donate that to the food pantry at Holy Trinity Episcopal Pantry. So, once again, I want to thank our town council. I also want to thank you for the Resolution 10799. I hope that's on the agenda this evening. And that is in support of the Senate and Assembly Bills for the $10.5 million library aid supplemental appropriation bill for the increase in the per capita library aid. That's important. So if you have any strings to pull, pull them in order to get, in order to get that passed. So, thanks again to everybody, and if you have any fines that you want to have done away with, wring your can of tuna fish, and we'll take care of it. Oh, yes, we're having a plant and book sale on May the 4th and 5th. So you can buy your Mother's Day plants that weekend. Thank you so much.
Thank you, March.
Thank you, March.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
So, just wanted to, I just have a couple of comments, I just wanted to bring up a couple of questions, just as it relates to the Rock Spring Club. The first one, just talking about the timeline for establishing Green Acres funding. Understand, there was a discrepancy in the timeline. It was either one-year or two-year, and just wanted to get an understanding on the actual timeline for that. The second one, I see there's a referendum on the, on the agenda tonight to increase the funding to the open space, and wanted to find out if that's as a result of the Green Acres. And if it is, if there's a period of vesting that that money has to be available before Green Acres is actually appropriated. Second item, just preparations of the golf course. As a, living on Fernwood, we actually look on to the golf course. Haven't seen a whole lot of action in terms of cleanup on the golf course, and just curious as to the timeline, and who on the council is actually overseeing that, that work to make sure that we hit the 5-1 deadline to get the space ready for game day. Let's call it. The next item is just establishing, what's the timeline to establish the two-year plan? Wondering if there's going to be a committee established, an opportunity to maybe invite some members from the rest, the community, specifically even the Rock Spring neighborhood or the adjacent neighborhood, as a, as a way to understand what's exactly happening in the next year, two years. In terms of the RFP that was issued, I understand that's also on the referendum for tonight. Understand the responses were not as great as everybody had hoped for, and just wondering what the steps were to actually make that decision to go with the one vendor. I've procured a lot of, a lot of materials over the years, and just looking at the process, I didn't see leveling information, I didn't see information explaining how we got to the decision that we did. So it'd be interesting to see that information made public. And then lastly, the issue of maintaining the existing structures on the facility. Reading through the Kemper RFP, it's not clear that they're actually going to be using the tennis or swimming facilities, or even the existing maintenance shed and structures. So looking at long-term maintenance, hoping that that, those buildings will not be deferred, because it would be a shame to have them designated as blight after two years. Just from a frame of reference, it would cost the town more than 12 million if you did actually have to replace the, any of those structures, including the swimming facilities. So long-term maintenance is just curiosity there. And then lastly, I apologize, my notes are right here. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Laura?
Lauren Swetvilaus, Prospect Avenue. And I'm joined by, just your name and address.
Randy Stevens, Yale Terrace.
So it's an exciting evening for us tonight. We just wanted to make a quick announcement. We have a flyer here. Our Green West Orange, we were contacted by Randy, who's doing a project in school. He'll elaborate a little bit. And he wants to plant trees in West Orange, and we love trees, so what a great relationship. So we've been working together for the past, maybe month or so, trying to figure out how to make this work and what we're going to do. So on May 4, we're going to offer 150 free saplings to West Orange senior citizens. They can contact, the information's here. We're posting on social media and flyers posted around town. Mark and Julie's just put up a flyer, and Fortissimo, and we're just making our way around town, the library. So, in cooperation with the Arbor Day Foundation. So we're getting our trees through them, and we're taking any donations as well. So we're starting with 150 trees. If we get more, we'll add those, and people can come on May 4 and pick up their trees at the Gregory School parking lot between 8:00 and 2:00 p.m. And they can also just email us at westorangefreetrees@gmail.com. And there'll be red maples, pin oaks, or tulip trees. We cleared that with Mr. Linson, our town forester. Those are good trees for our town, they're native species. And so, and then Randy has a crew of students and adult drivers who are going to run around, deliver trees to doorsteps, and if you'd like your tree planted in your yard, they'll do that as well. So, that's coming up May 4. But the project itself, Randy's going to explain a little bit.
So, I'm in eighth grade, student at Roosevelt Middle School, and in my ELA class, we're doing a year-long project called the Genius Hour Project, and it's supposed to create change in the community. And by doing that, I'm working with our Green West Orange because of my interest in the environment, so we can create change in the environment and community.
So we have some flyers Mr. Stevens is going to hand out. I guess he'll pass to Councilwoman Castellino, and she can pass them down. Take one, pass them down, as we say in school. And so appreciate you sharing it as liaisons to other committees and commissioners.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Very nice.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Make comments? Mr. Pagliisi?
Anthony Pagliisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Before you, I placed a brochure that we have put in the mail this weekend, and of course, all the information that I'm going to mention tonight is on our website, which is essexcounty nj.org. The first one is April 27th, it's a Saturday. It's the Drug Takeback Day. A few years ago, West Orange hosted our Spotlight Event to get that off the ground. So this is the fourth year that we've been doing it. That day, police stations, including West Orange across Essex County, will have their doors open, and anyone who has old and unwanted prescription medication, they can dispose of that anonymously and free of charge. We find in the war on opiate abuse, sometimes addiction begins at home when people take their parents' medications or take them erroneously. So this is a good way to get it out of the house. Spring cleaning, great time to clean out your bathroom cabinets. And a lot of municipalities, West Orange is one of them, their drop box is open year-round. So you don't, if you can't make it that day, you can bring your drugs, again, anonymously, free of charge, 365 days a year. Also, on the April 27th is our Earth Day Celebration at the Environmental Center. Then we have our collection, a couple other collection days. Household Hires Waste, May 4, and Computer Electronics Recycling Day, May 18. Just one note on that, we have a new location, which is our Public Works Building at 99 West Bradford Avenue in Cedar Grove. That's just around the corner where we had the collections in recent years. That site is being graded and made to look nice again, so it's no longer a parking lot. So we're going to relocate that to our Public Works Building. Also, on Friday, we had a big day at Turtleback Zoo. We had the opening of our new entrance and the opening of our upgraded train facility. And when you look at these two new structures, yeah, they look nice, but they also serve a great purpose. We're very cognizant of the impact that Turtleback Zoo has on Northfield Avenue and the surrounding area. So the new entrance was the first step in order to get people into the zoo a little quicker, a little more quickly, and in a more safer fashion. In previous years, we've had lines that went out into the parking lot. So with the new entrance, we have a larger patio area. We've also increased the number of admission points from four to 13, plus with another four at the education building. All that's designed is, it's designed to get people out of the parking lot and into the zoo as quickly as possible. With the train maintenance building, the new building helps us with the operation of the train. If it ever broke down or needed maintenance, we actually had to take the train off-site, which created a lot of downtime, and our, you know, our trains were running off-schedule. Our county executive doesn't like that. So this new facility allows us to maintain the trains on-site. One of the features of the building is a below-ground maintenance pit that you can just walk underneath, have the train drive over you, and you can work on it that way. But the building was relocated, and the reason for that is, we are building a third parking deck on-site, it's a third 500-car parking garage. That structure is entirely on zoo property. It does not extend into the reservation, and the property that the garage will be located was a former maintenance, was the former maintenance area of the zoo. So really, it wasn't a very attractive site. It was, there was a lot of storage on-site, there was a lot of hay bales and container, overseas containers that we use for storage. So not only will the, create, not only will it create additional parking for the zoo, but the ground floor will be the new storage area, so that the site will look a lot more cleaner, more aesthetically pleasing, and everything will be more, in a more climate-controlled atmosphere. So that groundbreaking was a few weeks ago. Like I said, on Friday, we had the opening for the entrance and the train building. The soft opening was supposed to be two weeks ago. It actually turned into a hard opening because we had over 12,000 visitors a couple Saturdays ago, and then this past weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, we had over 13,000 visitors. So the zoo is successful. We are working with West Orange, and we appreciate all the help that West Orange gives us, because your building department does the inspections. They come whenever we call them, and it's a great working relationship. And hopefully you come out and enjoy an afternoon at Turtleback.
Anthony, can I ask you a question? Did you have New Jersey Transit come to the opening?
No. No comment.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Anthony. I was going to make the New Jersey Transit joke, too. That's pretty good, Jeff. So with this new parking deck, would that alleviate, I see a lot of folks parking in the, on Pleasant Valley Way, when, of course, we're at McLemons on that side. Would that alleviate folks going in that area and walking over to the zoo?
Right. So what we find is that when people come to Turtleback Zoo, they immediately come to the zoo first, onto that site. And when there isn't parking, then they're leaving the zoo, going back out onto Northfield Avenue, and then they have parking at the Cherry Lane Lot. So, so the, the new garage is, that's what we want, we want to create more on-site parking, so that when you come to the zoo, you're, you're there, you're not recirculating back out. We're not going to say that we're going to never use that site again, because if we do get a day, like when we have our open house, which is June 1st this year, we do attract, you know, 12,000 to 15,000 people a day. So on an event like that, we most likely will be using that Cherry Lane Lot again. But the, the concept is that everyone will fit on-site with the three parking garages.
And y'all personnel out there directing traffic? Because that moves it along over on Cherry Lane, because I got stuck in that traffic. But I did see you had some personnel, you'll be fully equipped to handle that load. Okay, great.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Pagliisi? No? Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So it's, this is the last chance. Anybody else would like to speak to the council? No? At that, I'll close public comment, and I'll open the responses to my council colleagues. I did want to answer a question, though. The questions relating to Rock Spring Country Club, can we just give those questions right to the administration and Mr. Trank? Because instead of us going back and forth, back and forth, let's, answers particularly Mr. Rosenberg's question. So, Mr. Trank, would you like to?
Do you want to do everything else? And then we have a presentation with Mr. Kronheim, the head of the Evaluation Committee, and Mr. White.
Okay. So we'll do everything, we'll do everything else, and then we'll go back, so we won't cover Rock Spring now, but... Okay. Councilman Kukovia?
Ms. Mingen, thanks very much for coming to promote the library.
Ms. Minkin, thanks very much for coming to promote the library. Everybody should know that there's actually a group that Councilwoman Castellino and I are on called Friends of the West Orange Public Library. If you want to get your hands dirty with supporting the library, you can go to the library website, W O P L dot org. Click on the Friends tab at the top, and you can come join us. Mr. Rosenberg, thanks very much for coming up and continuing to be engaged here. Mr. Svet Velas and Mr. Stevens, what a wonderful, wonderful project. Congratulations, it's great. I'm not a senior yet, but I'd be very interested in getting a tree or two. Okay, I'm not a senior yet. And Mr. Pagliisi, thanks very much for your informative announcements of what the county's doing.
Thank you. Marge, thank you for your, you know, it is important. Libraries are important, and it's members of the Friends of the West Orange Library that move it forward. And hopefully you move the library into the 22nd century. Libraries are changing. I had a great tour of NYU's Medical Library, and it's rated as the number-one medical library in the world. And it has very few books. Everything, but I'm sure people like yourself and thank you, and the sort of Friends of the West Orange Public Library. Mr. Rosenberg, I hope you, that I'd rather have the experts answer your questions instead of everybody going back and forth. But thank you for your good points and your questions that we have, too, so we appreciate it. Lauren and Randy, good point. You know, this is the way people like yourself, and you get motivated to do these type of environmental issues. So you should be very proud of what you do. And you'll have a lasting presence when any saplings that grow. I am a senior, so these trees will grow, and it's a lasting legacy. So you should be very proud of what you do. And I wish you luck with that. And anything that we can do as the council and the township to help you, we will, we will do that. And Mr. Pagliisi, thank you. And thank you for the improvements. You know, people go around, when I walk around the reservoir, people say, gee, the township did such a nice job. And I just say, yeah, thank you very much. So, and, but also, thank you for the use of the ECEC, and we appreciate it. So thank you all. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. That reminds me of when Mark and Scott Kelly, the astronauts, were in town, and they said to the mayor, I like, where's Anthony? He said, I like what you've done to the place. We'll start with Marge. Marge, thank you for your comments. At Liberty Middle School, well, I don't even go back, that when, the director of the library, when I first met him, when he was new to West Orange, one of his goals, he told me, was to create a community center at the library. And just the few, only few of the things you just mentioned, and all of the things that we know that happened at the library, he has, in fact, done that. And in his comments at Liberty Middle School, when we were talking about designating the area needed redevelopment, and Rock Spring overshadowed a lot of things, I had in my notes about that Assembly Bill. So I have copies of them here. And I followed up on that to get the resolution on our agenda to create a $10.5 million supplemental appropriation to, it says fund per Capitol Library aid. So it's the, they're mirror images of themselves, the Assembly Bill and the Senate, and the Senate Bill. So I take copious notes. Mark, so as you heard, we're going to hear from the professionals here. But I do want to say that I am anxious also to create a plan or begin that process. And I have already been sending the mayor projects that Piscataway is undergoing, a recreation center and a community center, Edison. So I think what, what I like, the idea of creating this plan and doing the open public hearings to do that, is to see what other municipalities are doing, and then to pick and choose what it is that we need that will satisfy the needs of the community. So we're looking at a lot of things. None of that has happened yet, but I am always gathering information. And I'm glad that you touched base. Lauren and Randy Stevens, thank you so much for coming this evening for the 150 trees. It's a great project. I do, as the council liaison to the West Orange Environmental Commission, I invite you to come to our meetings. We do have a high school representative. We meet the last Wednesday of every month here in Town Hall at 7:00. You know, it's a school night, we don't last too long, but you're welcome to come. Because when you do projects like this, these are initiatives for the town that, I'm also the Sustainable Jersey Coordinator for the township. So when I see projects like this, because this isn't coming through the town, per se, it's happening in town, and I am a senior, and I would like a tree, you know, we're, we don't get points for this. And we have a couple of things Anthony just mentioned, the drug takeback. That was, here it's with the county, but because West Orange is part of that, we get points through our Sustainable Jersey certification for things like that. And we did advocate, they had two drop-off dates. Anthony, you mentioned it's open all year now, because we only had April and October, and that was revised to have it open all year, so that people, that the drugs were not misused or flushed down the tulip bowl, because we don't need that in our system either. So I invite you to come to the Environmental Commission meetings, last Wednesday of every month, to talk about new ideas, because any efforts to affect change is commendable. So I thank you for your, for your project.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matu Bra.
Yes, thank you. Marge, I want to say thank you for always coming to update us on, on the wonderful things that the Friends of the Library and the staff at the library and the volunteers at the library are doing. I've always believed that the library does more than give access to a computer or to books, but you give greater access to explore and, and to solidify and help aid in personal and professional growth. So I, I love the library. I love stacks. I'm, I'm a book nerd. So I prefer books over a laptop or a tablet any day. I still do. And so I just want to thank you for coming and always keeping us informed. And I do look forward to possibly joining the Friends of as soon as I can have a little bit of time to squeeze in. But thank you again. Mark, thanks for always coming out. I'm happy to see your face at, you know, coffees and at other meetings. Please continue to come. I feel like I'm in a 12-step program. Please keep coming back. But thanks for your participation. Your questions are valid, and I look forward to embarking on this journey with you and all the other residents and stakeholders and our administration. I think we're all very excited, so I look forward to that journey. And Lauren, thanks always for being involved. Randy, kudos to you. This is amazing. I have to be honest, I've recently started, recently, in the later part of my life, right? I'm not yet a senior, but almost, started to be more conscious of my own footprint, my carbon footprint. So I really do appreciate when I hear young voices advocating for environmental consciousness for all of us. I think it's important. I, I love that you started this. My husband is a senior, so we will be asking for a couple of trees, particularly since we just lost four on our property that were dead. So we'd love to replace them. So thank you so much for your creativity in this endeavor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Lauren and Randy, for this project. It's great, your advocacy. Mr. Fagan, maybe we could get this over to the new senior coordinators when they, they start this week? And we could get this out to some of our seniors and help you advertise it as well?
You've got a copy of the flyer.
Oh, good, great. But, but thank you. I think they'll take full advantage of it, and I think you'll need probably some more saplings for this. They're going to be very excited. Mark, thank you for coming down. I wrote down all of your questions, so if we don't hit them in the presentation, I'm sure we'll be asking about it. And I'm sure Mr. Trank took copious notes there. But it is going to be exciting year to plan this project out. I see a few folks from your neighborhood as well. And we'll see. I know the vendor, I'm going to a wedding at Galloping Hill this summer. I know the vendor is, has that contract over there, so I will be taking good notes there as well. I guess I'll have to sample all the food there to see how, how everything is. So I'll be walking around with my notepad. Should be a good time. And Marge, I can't say enough, I'm so sorry I couldn't get there today. I had to go into work. I thought yesterday, when I shot you that email, I had a chance of sneaking by. But the great volunteers and even the staff at the library, I can, I can never say enough. I'm going to mention, touch base on, we have this new grant and, and the participation and the interaction with the library later on when we get to the resolution for it. But again, just all great stuff that we have going on lately. And I'll turn it back over to you, Council President, so we can get started on all the good things to come here in the township.
Are you rushing me, council?
Yes.
I just want to take one more time. First, Joe, I want to thank you for being here and your presentation. I forgot, you know, I get so comfortable with you being around. I just know that you're here, and you're always here for us, and thank you. Just want to do a big shout-out to Public Works, who did a fantastic shredding day on Sunday.
Yeah.
I mean, the lines flew. So we pulled up at quarter to 11:00, there were 50 cars all the way down the road. By quarter after 11:00, they were all gone. So I want a big shout-out to the administration and the Public Works Department. Great job that was done, and I think the residents are very appreciative. Okay, now, according to Councilwoman Castellino, let's move on. How would we like to do this, Madam Clerk? Could we have Mr. Trank and the people from Rock, you know, Rock Spring make the presentation? And this way we can answer the residents and Mr. Rosenberg's question. Mr. Trank?
Thank you. Good evening. Richard Trank, Township Attorney for the Township of West Orange. So obviously, for, since approximately January 7th, we have been moving at breakneck speed to basically, with the cooperation of everyone in town, especially the council, to finish the acquisition of Rock Spring. And today, at about 1:30, 2:00, I do have to tell you that we, we think we cleared the very last hurdle, and that is that the Superior Court Judge, who handled this matter on emergent basis, did enter a final order that basically declares that no one can attach a lien or any kind of lis pendens or cloud of title on the closing, and that Montclair Golf Club was authorized to go forward with the closing. And so that was the last hurdle. We had a three-hour hearing, as you all saw in my confidential email last Friday night. On Friday, at that time, Judge Alpert entered restraints, saying that none of the former members of Rock Spring could go forward with their threatened lis pendens or anything to cloud title. Then on Sunday morning, I got a text from one of the lawyers from them, who said that they would, based upon that, abandon any claim as the title, and that they would consent to the process, and they would agree that whatever their claims are, they have certificates, they assert, are going to be purely monetary claims against Montclair Golf Club and will not affect West Orange. They have waived any claim against the town, monetary or otherwise. So that is excellent news, and that leads us to where I believe, and Mr. Gross can comment on this at the appropriate time, that Mr. Gross and Mr. Hanley and Mr. Seaton and Everett Johnson will begin the process of selling the bonds that have been advertised and whatnot, beginning Thursday. And that that process should lead to the ability to close. We are now targeting next Thursday, April 18th, as the date for the closing, assuming everything goes well with bond sales. So that is the, we set it up for Thursday, so that if it slips, we can go into Friday. Friday is not a banking holiday. It is obviously a religious holiday, but not a banking holiday. So if we need to get the money across the wire. So that's critical. The mayor did want me to indicate, and Mr. Fagan's starting to work on it, that assuming that everything goes well, that we're hoping to have a community-wide, basically, we'll call it ribbon-cutting, but they're probably a more formal name than Mr. Fagan will come up. So watch the websites. As soon as that is finalized, we'll get that word out. Again, for the moment, I'm going to say Friday, April 26th, at 7:00 p.m. at Rock Spring. But that's subject to slippage and obviously assumes a closing. So going back a few council meetings ago, pursuant to the local public contracts law that allow competitive contracting for a contract of this nature, you authorized us to put the RFP on the street. And the RFP was quite lengthy and went into all the nuances. Keep in mind, we tailored it based upon, as does not surprise anyone, getting RFP formats from Union County, that has a concessionaire, and Hudson County, that has concessionaires, and several other, others around the state. It was issued on February 21st, 2019, requires a 20-day notice. There were, and I believe it's all in the evaluation report, that was put online, and basically, I think nine or 10 different entities picked it up or received it. It was nationally advertised. So again, this is not something that was just put in the West Orange Chronicle. By no means was put on the internet. And, and so the word got out. People picked it up. You saw that besides the Kemper response, we did get a letter from another vendor that said they were very interested, but they would not bid or provide a proposal when we're only talking about a two-year period, which is really only 20 months, as, as Kemper has reminded us. So, and we all know that the reason it's only a two-year proposal and a two-year contract that we're proposing to you is because the mayor committed to the community that in this timeframe, that there will be a community effort to determine what is viable, what are the options, and where do we go to on long-term. You also are aware that when the local finance board unanimously approved waiving the deposit, they said in the two years, figure it out. So we're going to continue, quote, "running the course," but running down that process that many people have alerted to, and the mayor is committed to, to figuring it out. So number one is, let's see how viable golf is. Again, anecdotally, and you're in the community as much, if not more than anyone, the community appears to be excited about Rock Spring, which is probably one of the most beautiful golf courses in North Jersey, playing there as a public course and not having the financial commitments that obviously private clubs, including Rock Spring, have had. Number two, you are well aware that this does have a burden financially, and, and the mayor is committed to trying to find a appropriate project that can go on part of it, which would probably mean shrinking the course. We have reached out to try to get some proposals from kind of golf course architects, because when we come up with that right project, we got to make sure if we're going to have a continued course that is viable as a course. So that takes us to the Evaluation Committee. So under the local public contracts law, when you put an RFP out of this nature, when it comes in, you have to have a conflict-free, and every member of the committee did certify that they had no relationship with Kemper or anyone else involved in this. And there was a committee of six that was chosen by the mayor. The mayor was on the committee and actively participated. Mr. Keough, the Director of Department of Recreation, was on it. Mr. Lepore, the Township Engineer. Will Nester, N-E-S-T-O-R, who is a local neighbor and lives on Rock Spring Road, and had reached out to the mayor on numerous occasions, was on the committee and actively participated. He's traveling today. He works for a healthcare company that, on a national basis. In addition, who else was on the committee? If I can get it right. You have the committee report? So it was six people on the report. I just wanted to make sure we got them all. Mr. Gross was obviously on it as the CFO, appropriately would be on it. And if I missed a name, Mr. Kronheim will. Mr. Kronheim was the chair. So Mr. Kronheim, who has never had any relationship with the town, we specifically went out and looked for someone who had independent golf course knowledge and ownership. We presented him on a consulting contract that we presented to the council, and the council approved at least two meetings ago, and who has guided us through this process, has been available 24/7 on all levels. So without further ado, again, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kronheim, who will explain a little more about the process and about the vendor who is being recommended to take over the course as soon as practicable after the closing. Do you have other questions?
You wanted to address the Green Acres funding.
Well, okay, so yes, everyone in the council and the community is aware that one of the reasons that we're on what I'll call a short leash, so to speak, and this is in a positive way, is we have already reached out, Mr. Lepore, Mr. Gross, I believe Mr. Sayers, have already reached out to Green Acres, which is a part of the Department of Environmental Protection that has funding, and is very, very interested in providing funding. that has funding, and is very, very interested in providing funding, but can only provide it when we decide what is going to be permanently deed restricted for open space. And that can include recreation. So that can include the golf course. But we were obviously not ready for this round. So the question that was asked earlier is, is it next year or two years? It would be the next round. There's a lead time, and so, again, we hopefully could figure it out in the next year, but that means the money would only be available, obviously, when the next round comes out, which may be 18 months or two years. So Ms. Gross will amplify that. I want to say two last things. At some point in the presentation, Mr. Kizer did some background analysis as to certain aspects of the RFP that Kemper submitted, and Mr. Gross met today with financial people from Kemper to ensure ourselves independently that the viability of this proposed vendor. Because again, nothing is more important than we have the right vendor at the right time to give the best opportunity for this to run as smoothly as possible, recognizing that there's no guarantees in anything, and recognizing that it did not make it as a private course. So we need the community to stand behind it, but we also need to have as solid a partner as possible. Also, as you know from the RFP and whatnot, part of what we did here is part of the model that we do at the recycling center. We want to have a contract compliance officer, and that's where Mr. Kronheim is critical. We've wanted him to be involved in educating us and guiding us to this point and the start of this, which is critical to the success of this. But we also want and have built in to the RFP where the vendor will pay $1,000 a month, Mr. Kronheim will be available telephonically, and he will make surprise inspections. And obviously, the administration believes he's important to make sure that everything is, the trains are running on time, to use the example that was talked about, and that we have the right supervision. So, subject?
Mr. Trank, I'm sorry. Just to follow up on Mark's other question, too, with respect to when another resolution for Green Acres is on this evening's agenda.
Open space.
Open space, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, not Green Acres, open space. You look so confused, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I did. I said, okay. If I wrote it, I thought. Yes, go ahead.
But is there a time that has to be vested before we can apply? So we passed that resolution today, I think I'm not framing it properly, but we passed the resolution tonight, is there a timeline where we have to wait for?
We're not using that money.
No, I know we're not using that money for Green Acres to be able to?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Gross.
To kick in.
Yeah.
So is there a wait period for that?
I'll be in a big checklist, it's a checklist item. We just have to be in a position to be collecting at least one and a half point.
And there's no amount of time prescribed that we have to?
And that money really isn't tied to this project at all.
Yes.
It's just, in order to qualify for future Green Acres funding, we have to be in the position of collecting it and using it for whatever purposes that the township decides to use it for. This isn't locked into any specific project.
And the only reason that we weren't able to, I mean, well, not the only reason, but there were several factors why we couldn't apply right away.
Had nothing to do with that.
Had nothing to do with it.
Had nothing to do with it.
No, I just want to be very clear so that the audience does understand that it wasn't beholden on this.
There's only one reason that we could not apply, and that's because we have not been able to identify with certainty what parcels or what portions of the parcels would not be dedicated to open space.
Open space, yep.
So that has to be done before we receive $1 of funding for that site.
Okay.
Or any, or any project is down. Because we, since we're going to be operating the entire site as recreation, should we choose money for anything for Green Acres, we'd lock in that entire site. So we're pretty much on hold until we get that completed, and that's why we all agree that that's our next major.
Mr. Trank?
So the last, the last point I want to come back to, and at some point, Mr. Kizer I know was in court, and the mayor, I want to stress, the mayor came to court last Friday with the township, and I think that spoke volumes to the importance this is to the entire community. And at the end of that two-and-a-half, three-hour oral argument, when the judge rendered her decision and made all the parties say they have to come back this Thursday, which is now moot because they've all folded and agreed, the judge found there was overwhelming public policy and basis for what the township has done in terms of stepping in and saying, "We're going to seek to control this process and seek to maximize the course and the open space and Green Acres and maintaining the club, the course, so that it doesn't go into disrepair." So to, obviously, to the extent that that was an independent branch government that also, as has this branch government, as has the state and whatnot, it just reaffirms that everything that the township has done, and this, through this council, has obviously been done on an expedited basis, but been done for the purposes that I assume the township and the council exist. So I'm going to defer to Mr. Kronheim. His hours have been enormous, and his interest in this project have been extremely helpful, and I just want to thank him again.
Thank you, Richard. That's very kind of you. My name is David Kronheim. It's, I've had the chance to work with some of you here on the day, some of the council members. I look forward to getting to know you better and to getting to work with you. It's been, you know, I've sat through a few meetings about Rock Spring, and at Rock Spring, the meeting at Rock Spring, the council meeting where the purchase was approved this evening. I just want to say what, add my name to the list of people who have come up to this podium and said wonderful things about what the township is doing. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful acquisition. It's a very, apart from the open space, it's a very historic golf course, one of the oldest and best golf courses in the state. And I think it's absolutely laudable, the approach the township has taken is laudable, to run the course for two years, come up with a plan, identify the best course forward. I think one of the things that Mr. Trank mentioned that's important is that, as you go through that process, the retention of a golf course architect is going to be important in identifying that Green Acres space, whatever it is that you decide you want to do with the course. You know, taking our time, figuring out what to do with it, I think makes a lot of sense. In the, in the interim, I'll just give a quick background for those in the audience about my qualifications. I've been very pleased to have been the head of the evaluation committee. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Watchung Valley Golf Club and located in Watchung over in Somerset County. I sit on the Board of the Jersey State Golf Association, have been legal, the legal committee at Deal Golf Club, just to name a few things. I've taught at the Cornell Hotel School. I am very active in golf in the state, and I was very honored to have been retained by the township to assist as you move through the process. As head of the evaluation committee, it fell to me and to the other members of the committee to evaluate the bids that we received. The fact that we received one bid might have been disappointing, except for who that bid was received from. And the fact that Kemper bid on the project, I think, is a testament to the fact that they want to be involved in the project and want to be part of this community. It's a, for those of you who don't know Kemper, they are a nationally respected company. I'm sure you'll hear a little bit more about that in a few minutes. I was told not to steal all of Mr. Blake's thunder. But we're, I really do mean that the township is quite, quite lucky to have received a bid from Kemper. They operate over 100 entities across 24 different states. Some of you may be familiar with what I'll say is your flagship operation, Band and Dunes, out in Oregon, one of the absolute best golf resorts, not in the United States, but anywhere in the world. They also have a wonderful relationship with the city of Chicago and operate a public facility there known as Harborside, closer to home here in New Jersey. And you'll correct me if I get any of this wrong, but I hopefully am so far, I'm thinking about in a thousand. In New Jersey, they operate two government-owned facilities, Heron Glen Golf Course in Hunterdon County and Galloping Hill in Union County. They have just a tremendous track record of success wherever they have operated. And again, we really, really are quite lucky to have them. I think in particular, and Mr. Trank alluded to this earlier in his opening remarks, but the 20-month term of the contract is incredibly short. It's very, very short to ask someone to come in and take a contract that's less than two years. It's particularly short, given the time that they are coming in. They're not coming in, you know, January 1st with plenty of time to see the operation sort of revved up as we get into golf season. I don't know about you, but if you're a golfer, it's about time to take the golf clubs out, and they, we still haven't even closed on the property. So again, Kemper, I think, is to be commended for, to stepping into the breach there and for working with the same speed that the township has required to make the acquisition. It'd be well and good to acquire the property, but without a plan for operation, that would really be quite futile. So I do want to talk a little about the structure of the agreement and why I think it makes sense for the, excuse me, why I think it makes sense for the township. The contract provides for a payment of 5% gross revenue as a base fee to the township. I think that's a, you know, a great platform to start with. The first, so that first 5% of gross revenues will flow to the township as a base fee. The, Kemper will then receive a management fee that is equal to that 5% of gross revenue. So in essence, the township is receiving a priority payment of that first 5% of gross revenues, which will be paid monthly. The, at the end of the, within 60 days for the end of the calendar year, the folks at Kemper will do a, will do an accounting, and thereafter, there's a certain, there's $61,000 roughly in what we've termed pre-closing costs. Basically, the cost that Montclair is incurring now to operate the, not to operate, but to maintain the golf course facilities prior to closing, and to get the golf course ready for takeover by the township. Kemper has agreed to pay those fees upfront and has asked to be reimbursed out of the proceeds, out of the earnings, the net proceeds in year one in the amount of $30,000, and in year two in the amount of $31,308.75. The thereafter, and I think this is probably the part of the agreement that is really the most exciting for the township and also sort of just a wonderful model, Kemper and the township will split the net proceeds 50/50. This was something that Kemper brought to us in discussions. It's the same contract that you have with the city of Chicago and the operation of Harborside. It truly makes Kemper a partner with us for this 20-month period, and I was excited to wholeheartedly recommend this on behalf of the evaluation committee. With that, I'll introduce Mr. Ben Blake of Kemper Sports.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me, and we're very excited about the opportunity. A little bit about me, I've been with Kemper Sports actually in two stints. I was the fourth employee, the company just, we're celebrating our 40th anniversary this year. So been in the golf business a long time. I left for a little period, and I've been back, and I basically do new business for the company. As was mentioned, we manage, own and lease over 100 golf courses throughout the United States. Of those, 42 are owned by municipalities or park districts or public sectors. So we have tremendous amount of experience in that space. We actually really like working with councils and mayors and staff. We're very much used to it. I think it was part of the initial interest we had here. This is a unique deal. There's sort of one of the questions, why weren't there more bidders? And maybe a little background, in the golf industry, there's sort of three types of companies. There are golf companies that basically buy golf courses, that's what they do. And then there's golf companies that only manage golf courses, and they don't do anything else but third-party management, where you pay them a fee. Then there's a few of us out there that sort of do a little bit of everything. We own, we buy, and we lease. And in this particular case, I think that the quality of the golf course and the uniqueness and the history, we're golf guys. And so, you know, it's sort of like buying a Frank Lloyd Wright house. You feel like that somehow you should be involved, and, but also, each golf course is unique, and the uniqueness of this golf course and this location with the town of West Orange, really for us, was a very intriguing opportunity to try to do something unique. A normal lease for something like this, and the reason why you probably didn't get any bids, is we wouldn't, we wouldn't bid on something with less than a 10-year window, because the amount of effort and resources and risk, quite frankly, that it takes to get involved. But we believe this is going to work, and we believe that, you know, that we're going to be good partners and really look forward to being involved in a golf course of this quality and this historic note. So we are flexible. I think this is going to take a lot of flexibility, and we understand that there'll be a lot of turns in the road, but we really are excited about being a part of it and want to make it successful, and know that a lot of things could change, and we're, we sort of pride ourselves, I think, we, the more complicated the deal, the better for us, for some reason, I'm not sure. But, but we think this will be a beautiful project and looking forward to it. I was out there today toward the golf course. It came through the winter well. It needs some cleanup, there's no question. You know, there's some bunker work, but it's all pretty much normal when a golf course comes out of the winter, although the grass hasn't started growing because it's been so cold. But we obviously have a quick ramp up, and we have, we have actually a few more courses. We actually manage six public sector courses here in the state of New Jersey, and a hockey rink for Union County. And we just took over a private country club down in, outside of Princeton on Monday. So we've got a big presence in the state of New Jersey. We have a lot of resources here. We're excited about this. We think that part of our strategy is always a lot of media, a lot of publicity. We think that this course has an amazing story, and we're anxious to tell it. So looking forward to it, and I'm here to answer any questions as well.
I have.
I just want to quote one more before Mr. Kronheim and Mr. Blake answer all the questions. There was a question asked earlier about the pool, the tennis and the paddle ball.
It's Mr. Rosenberg's question.
So the bottom line of the story is, there is not a current intention by Kemper to operate those three. With regard to the pool specifically, we have spent so much time and effort and resources of the town for our public pool, that we don't want anything to happen that would in any way, shape, or form. Ginny Dunkel is a tremendous resource. So the bottom line is, between the cost to open it and maintain it and do all the safety issues, certainly Kemper has said they are not going to open that. Similarly, with regard to tennis and the paddle balls, and you remember at one of the earlier public meetings, there were a couple of paddle ball enthusiasts, and that's something you can do year-round. Again, Kemper, in this contract, does not intend to open those facilities. Having said that, the contract specifically allows West Orange to do it as long as it doesn't interfere with golf operations. So I'll put TBD, to be determined by the town. We're not saying no, but we respect and want to make sure we give the golf as much opportunity as we can, and recognize that that would cause more resources and expenses by the operator.
Okay, my, no, my question, if I may. At this point in time, in the closing, how soon can Kemper open the golf course?
Okay, excellent question. We're still arm-wrestling that. The direction of the mayor is, as soon as reasonably practicable. So I know if the mayor was standing here, he would say, "The reason we're planning a nighttime reception on April 26th is with the hope and prayer that on Saturday morning, April 27th, Mr. Blake and his staff will allow their..." But he had, the issue, and the reason this litigation was unfortunate, but that's why we're happy it's done, uncertainty is not good. And one of the points that Mr. Blake did not make, but that has been not lost on deaf ears, is he has several people who work in his organization in Union County, and I think in, at the Knoll in Parsippany, who are former people who ran or worked at Rock Spring. So besides the fact that it's known everywhere, he's got some of those people on his staff. So we're hoping with a mixture of them, and of course, with all the positive publicity, and I know people here are already getting contacted. So again, we are saying in stone, we're closing on April 18th, because we're hoping that that means beginning on April 19th or even before. But again, that requires you to award the contract. If you don't award the contract tonight, then nothing happens.
Here's another question, Mr. Trank, to, from Kemper. How do you feel the conditions of the golf course are now?
I'm sorry. Based on what I saw today, the golf course looks good and normal of coming out of the winter. There's, you know, there's tree work to do, there's bunker work to do, but I was actually pretty pleased with how it came out of the winter, meaning that what you can have when you have snow cover, you can have some disease, and it doesn't appear there's any disease. The turf certainly appears to be in good condition. You know, that basically, if you think about it, the club went into the fall thinking that they would be open, and in talking to the superintendent, they continued their practices into the fall. So didn't see anything that really alarmed us, either from a turf standpoint or a...
You don't see? You don't see any long-term, any damage that's long-term that's going to prevent you from opening the golf course within a reasonable amount of time?
No.
And Mr. Keough went out there last Friday, took pictures. Again, I think Mr. Blake and Mr. Kronheim have about 48,000 people who have eyes on this. So Mr. Keough was out there, took pictures, we emailed them. That's why I want them to continue to do what they're doing between now. Mr. Kronheim is going to have one of his mechanics repair people come out on Friday and look under the hood of all of the equipment because again, we do have a fair amount of leverage between now and the closing date to get Montclair to do it. And I will note, and while I respect Mr. Rosenberg's comments, I did note on part of the property this morning, there were eight or so guys who, I think they were men, who were working, okay, good. She's confirming. And they've been, they're, they're, good. So another member of the public is saying that I, they also saw him. So I know they've been told, don't cut corners because you don't want Rich Shanks doing the walkthroughs.
We don't want the residents, right? My next, my next point is to what you're saying, Mr. Trank, is that will the council or will we get periodic updates, assessment reports of what's going on to also go back to Mr. Rosenberg's question about the timeline? Are we going to meet the timeline? How are the conditions, how are the additions being addressed?
Well, we got two different issues in your comments. Mr. Kronheim's role is post-closing to be there on a regular basis.
And will we get reports on him? I'd like to know.
I'll talk with Mr. Kronheim.
Yes.
Thank you. You answered my thought. And my, and my last question is, is that I noticed there's like a 60-day when the year end closes, but I personally, as a financial person, would like to see monthly financials from the operation.
Well, they have to, that's also provided for in the agreement, yes. In the agreement before you, they report monthly to Mr. Gross and we'll circulate them in real time.
I mean, I know Mr. Gross, but I want, I think the council would like to see, I would personally like to see.
Everything will be transparent.
No, no, I'm not.
Yeah, I think it's worth also mentioning the standard to which, when you receive a report from me, that's, the report will reflect the, really the answer to the question, is Kemper maintaining the golf course as a first-class daily fee facility in the Northeast? That's the standard that we've put into the contract with Kemper's agreement. And that's really the standard that we're looking to maintain the golf course to.
And we will get, we will get stat reports about attendance, usage, revenues and everything else on a periodic basis?
Yeah, that'll come directly from Kemper, their month-end financials.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Michelle, Councilman Casalino.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for all the information. My questions are in regards to the other amenities on the property. So we mentioned the tennis courts, the building itself, the clubhouse. So are you having intention of operating at least the grill room or what about the rest of the facility?
Yeah, so first of all, I think we all, or the way we've approached this is we're converting a private country club into a public golf course. And so from our perspective, and I think from your perspective, you know, interesting discussion here is because we split the proceeds 50/50, you know, we're both on the same side of the table, which is great. But if you looked at that golf course and took a step back and said, this is going to be a public golf course, you don't need a 27,000 square foot clubhouse. Heat, cool, staff, et cetera. So the question becomes, what parts of the clubhouse can we use and do we need for a public facility? And then what parts do we not need? And I understand, you know, the concerns about making sure long-term the building's maintained, but we are basically going to, in simplest terms, move the operation to the front where we can have a pro shop, the bar, and the restaurant all in front of the building. And that's sort of an odd building that rambles on. And, you know, for us too, it's a little bit, we're starting a new business here. This is, if you think about it, we haven't had our first customer. So based on our experience, and that's the reason why you really have engaged us, you're saying, what would you do if you owned it? That's the way we approach this. And so we've looked at the building and said, we're going to move the operations to the front of the building by the first tee, use the patio, the kitchen's up there, the bar's up there. It works, in our opinion. If long-term, for example, we're going to sell an annual pass, if there was a scenario where we ended up with 100 or 150 pass holders, we might change the way we use the clubhouse. But in this very first partial year to get open, that's our game plan and it's all subject to change. And that's really because it's a public golf course and that's the way we're approaching it.
And if you, with the pool being shut, I assume it will be closed off this summer, will there be any kind of deterioration from it not being in use in the hot summer weather or?
I don't know that I, I guess there's water in the pool currently. I don't know to answer your question, because I'm not a pool guy.
But we'll have to talk to Mr. Lepore. But the short answer is it'll be what it'll be. I mean, we can't operate a pool there, you know, because we don't have the personnel and we don't want to do anything that affects Ginny Dunkle. So unless the operator felt it was financially viable, which they are not, they want to focus their efforts into, you said, food and beverage, golf operations, you know, what is needed. So I'll talk to Mr. Lepore and Mr. Keough, but right now it's going to be lawful.
But it's not, but it's not impossible to...
I'm sorry. This is work.
It's okay, I don't need specifics. But as far as not using it, I mean, if you formulate a plan and say in a month or two for next summer, you may think, let's try a type of swim club with a golf membership, summer membership. I mean, not, I mean, there can be other plans formulated. I don't want to close it out.
Yeah, we're not foreclosing anything. And again, where it might make sense is for special event, you know, if somebody, but I know the mayor does not want to do anything to affect detrimentally Ginny Dunkle.
Oh, no, no, I get it.
So we, that, so again, if somebody had a tournament or an event, you know, maybe that, but I think for now, we're kind of starting late in trying to make this successful. And that's where the mayor wants the focus to be on, where Kemper wants it to be on the operation course.
I think some of these question marks will get cleared up over the next two years.
Right.
Make some decisions about, all right, really, what are we going to do with this, you know, with the property, you know, and these different aspects of it. So it's just like, as Mr. Trank said, there's no way we can operate or have any activity there at this point in time. Whether we do in the future, we'll determine over the next few years.
And right now, as you know, there's no way West Orange could operate anything there. That's why the vendor is critical and that's why a viable, strong vendor is critical. I want to point out that Mr. Keeser, assuming this contract is awarded tonight, will begin tomorrow working with Kemper so that we can get, I think it's called a concessionaire's license or basically it'll be a West, I'll let Mr. Keeser explain how that works.
Right, it'd be a concessionaire's license for an ABC license, which would, they would obtain and for use on our property. And I'm happy to, we'll talk about it, but I'm happy to do whatever I can to help accomplish that as quickly as possible.
Yeah, because we, obviously, when we open, we want their, that revenue and that capability is critical for any course. And Kemper has qualified for other similar licenses in New Jersey, which is something that will help us expedite that process.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Excuse me, Council President. Are we going over the contract itself right now? We have a few...
We're trying to answer, you know, trying to get Mr. Rosenberg's questions answered and everything else. And then we'll go to the contract. Councilwoman Matute Brown, do you have a question?
Well, I have, I have contract questions.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So in regard, okay, so again, keep on the, so any, on page 10, on the bottom of the contract, maintenance of the golf course facilities. So as far as any kind of renovations will not be made for two years then?
Well, again, we've had a number of discussions on this. And Mr. Lepore and I had a call this morning and that's why the decision was made that Mr. Kronheim's mechanic should come out on Friday to spend the day and that, and this is why it was so important that Ben go through the whole course today and Mr. Keough go for it. And we'll do another, we'll do walkthroughs basically every day until we close. So we can all appreciate that, God forbid, the roof has an issue. Kemper's not responsible for putting a new roof on. That, this is our property. So all, what we crafted this carefully, they're responsible and as you know, the mayor said from the beginning, this is, they have all the operational risk. That's why the, what we've negotiated with a base fee of 5% is critical. So the short answer is if there's cap X or items of that, we'll have to address it.
Okay.
If I can, if I can just add, you know, Mr. Blake said an important thing. It's going to be important to be flexible here. And, you know, when things come up and things are going to come up, we're going to have to work through them and deal with them and work together to make this successful.
Okay. And then from what I see, something on page nine, in regards to signage, you had crossed out, as far as the existing signs, the township's going to maintain all that, not...
The mayor has already been on that. West Orange, it's, it's, it's West Orange's club, we're going to deal with signage, we're going to keep it as professional and we want to keep it as consistent as the, we'll call it the historic look of Rock Spring. But that's definitely not an expenditure of Kemper other than, you know, what we put here for advertising their operations.
Okay. And as far as the golf courts and whatnot, they're our responsibility?
No, they're providing the court, the cost.
Courts, the courts.
They are. They are providing...
Okay, so if a cart breaks down, that's on them.
Well, yeah, because that would be an operational expense, yes. And they're, I think you're generally, and Mr. Blake can explain it, leased, but they're part of the operational cost of the club.
Okay, yeah, because I see on page 12, the different operational, some things were crossed out.
Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing, which I think we went over, the township's use of the building itself. So there'll be various opportunities if we were to have an event there, it just wouldn't be...
Well...
See, my concern is if we have, we want to have a township event there, will part of the building be shut down that we will not be able to use? Like for example, where we had the meetings in the dining rooms.
Well, again, we are allowed to hold up to four events at the facility during the golf season and whatnot. So other than that, it is the Kemper operation at the club. So again, I know they will be flexible, but we don't want to do anything to interfere with our ability to succeed as much as plausible, so.
Okay. That's it, Council President.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
I do, I actually have some questions. In the 3.2 business plan, threefold question. A, do you have a draft of a plan? Will the plan include any special pricing for West Orange residents or senior citizens, students? And in the RFP, there was a requirement or a request for servicing underprivileged and underserved communities. So what does that concept look like to Kemper?
I guess to answer your last question first, the way we'll do this is that clearly in peak times, weekends, holidays, et cetera, we'll have, you know, peak pricing as you would expect. In non-peak times and, you know, probably Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we have more flexibility in offering more attractive pricing, et cetera. If you think about it, again, in our case, we want the golf course to have golfers, we want it to be embraced by the community, we want it to be used by the community. And there's enough capacity out there that we feel like we can attract and service the various customer segments is the way we talk about it. So that we might have a junior clinic and junior golf on Monday and something else on Tuesday afternoon and some senior pricing or twilight pricing on certain days. And all that will be driven by demand. And, you know, ultimately, both parties have to have a financially successful course here. And both parties, I think, you more than us, obviously, but we have an investment, we have risk. And so we're going to treat your money and our money in such a way that we serve the community and yet try to fulfill the financial obligations we have. And it's in our best interest to do both and try to do both.
So do we, do we have a draft of a plan? I'm sure there's one working.
There's a draft, but we, I mean, we have to deliver it in the next two weeks and this is something we're used to doing. We've got a template, we, you know, will, and in fact, I had to do a draft of a plan to get this approved internally. So the short answer is yes.
Thank you. Okay. When, and the name, although it's not expressly written in the, in the management contract, it is going to remain Rock Spring.
It's up to you. I mean, I think that's definitely...
We did, we did purchase the rights to it. So I just wanted to be clear because it's not specified. And again, I am not a golfer, so some of these questions might seem very pedestrian to you. But what are the months of operation typically for a golf course?
Well, in New Jersey, it can be as early as March. Basically, you're trying to get to the point where the frost is out of the ground and the grass is growing. Unfortunately, it's not growing very much right now. It's been a cold spring. And we'll go right up to, you know, into November and it all depends on if you're getting frost and freeze in the fall and in the winter, going out of the winter, is the golf, is the grass growing? Because if it isn't, if you think about it, you sort of start wearing it out already. And it's soft out there. So I would say the real, the real season gets going in mid-April, early April to the end of October.
Considering that Kemper runs several nationwide, but specifically in New Jersey, what is an estimate with the size of our community, understanding that we have a number of existing golf courses, both private and public, what is an estimate for a monthly generation of revenue? Do you have a ballpark?
I don't know if I can answer that question. I'd have to look, you know, maybe let's talk about rounds because, you know, how many people can go out and play? And one of the things golf courses do, you know, some golf courses have a concept of high volume, so they have what we call eight-minute spacing on tee time. So every eight minutes, four people can tee off. And usually what happens is that, that results in slow rounds of golf because you in effect put too many people on the golf course. And in all the customer surveying that we've done, that's actually the number one item that either leads to satisfaction or dissatisfaction. You know, it's interesting that golfers, because of the time commitment, price is not necessarily the driver in the decision. It's, you know, speed of play and especially in today's world, the days of people coming to the golf course and hanging out and sitting in the bar are over. They come, they play, they leave. And that's even, the facilities now reflect that and that even is reflected in the private club business. So what we will do here is have 10-minute spacing. And in some cases, you put in what's called a starter's time where you don't let anybody. And our goal is to have, you know, four-hour rounds or shortly, you know, something in that range because we believe speed of play is so important because it really drives customer satisfaction. And we're really in the repeat customer business. You can't continually, it's like every business in this, in this world, you can't continually create new customers. You really have to get the existing customer to come back. The other thing we find is, you know, the influencers. And the influencers tend to be the better players, which we think will be attracted to this course. And they're the ones that tend to call up their three friends and say, let's go play. So there's a strategy against the influencers and that's largely driven by course conditions and speed of play and the way they're treated. And so that formula has worked well for us in the, in the definition of an upscale daily fee because that player expects certain things. And he or she, you know, if they don't get it, it won't come back. The other thing we do is we have a program, we have two programs, number of programs. One is called True Review where when you play, at the end of your round, you'll get an email with six survey questions and it's all about customer satisfaction. We're happy to share that with everybody. We measure our performance daily and that's the way we measure our team because customer satisfaction and input and feedback is key. And then we've created a program that's been in the company now for about 10 years called True Service, which is a four-module customer service employee education program so that the level of service and the attitude, it's more attitudinal than, it's not about how you serve a drink, it's more about how you treat customers, how you treat your fellow workers, how do you, how you really, the attitude of the staff and the culture of the staff. And we found that all those programs have, have really worked well.
Thank you. Let me see where else am I? I know there were some modifications that were made after I went through this, so I just want to make sure that the questions that I had are... That's all I have for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. Mr. Blake, thank you very much. Thank you for your interest. And David Cronheim, thank you for your commitment. I don't really have any questions. What, what I just want to make some comments, though, about, you kept using the word flexibility. To me, that's synonymous to creativity, because you're coming in with this concept. It's not, it's a plan, but it's conceptual, and it's yet so practical and productive at the same time. And yet, I, I hear that you're being creative in, in, in the whole, in the process. And I appreciate that. And just talking about this measuring your performance, you know, this is a public course, yet you're maintaining the elegant standards of a private course. So that also sounds, just, just appreciate to hear that, those, the comments that you made. Throughout the contract, you talk about discounts and offering things for residents. And since this is a 50/50 operation, one of the things that I would like to suggest is that the township has a property tax credit card program, and that people that sign up to that, businesses in town, can offer, this is at your decision, you can decide the percentage that you would like to offer a resident. And, you know, whatever the percentage is, they're, you decide. But that amount that comes off the price gets credited to a property tax credit bill. So it's an excellent program. A lot of businesses are involved in it. And that benefits you, and then it would benefit the, the township as well. So just something to consider if you're trying to decide what that offer should be for preferential treatment for local residents. Just a suggestion. So I really look forward to working with both of you for your commitment to West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, Councilman Kocoviac.
Yes, I have the operation. I'm a councilman now. Mr. Blake, you mentioned that you've developed a business plan as part of the, as part of the process here, and that you have a template. You've mentioned a couple of things, I think, that are part of your, your plan already. But are there, can you talk about some of the major elements that you expect to have with a business plan? Give people a better idea about what kind of course to expect, and that, and that's-
Sure. Well, we're in a very competitive business. And then, you know, unfortunately, golf is actually, as many have known, have, you know, sort of, a little bit on the decline. It's, it's struggled as people, as actually the next generation is coming up and not playing golf in the same ways that past generations are. So the, we've found the consumer at all levels, at all price points, is pretty darn sophisticated. They have a lot of choices. They can play a lot of golf courses in this community. They're all in pretty good shape. You know, the days of sort of the municipal course not being very good are, are long gone. And so, we have to present a product that matches the price value of, of what we're trying to do. Because it's a high-quality golf course, because it's going to be a high-end daily fee, because we have a nice clubhouse, you know, we're going to charge a rate commensurate with that experience, but we have to deliver. And so, that means, as I said earlier, course conditions always have to be good. The customer on Tuesday is just as important as the one on Saturday. You know, service has to be good. And the service, you know, we talk as much, it's more attitudinal, you're expecting a, a certain level of service, but high-quality people. And speed of play, as I said, and just an overall positive experience, if you're going to take four or five hours out of your day to go play golf, we want you to come back. And so, you know, everything you do that contributes to that experience, that's what you're fighting, fighting for, and, and what we're trying to do and will continue to do here. And quite frankly, we've been quite successful in that space and doing that. So this isn't something new for us. And interestingly, in all our data, it's actually the, the golfers that continue to play and spend are the, are the more committed golfers, and they would be likely the ones that would be attracted to a property like, like Rock Spring. So that's another reason why we're very interested, is we think the product matches what's going on in the golf business today.
Can you talk a little bit about how you're pricing the services? You've got, in the first year, you're offering a, an annual pass for $2,900.
Yeah, I think those, you know, those prices are subject to change. I think that our experience has been this. First, you have to get people there. We are opening a new business. And whether that'll be the final price, that's, that's really more to, and remember, we're, it's a partial year as well. But I think that we're going to make sure that, that the golf course is busy, or try to make it busy from day one, get people out for, for trial, so to speak, see how we do, see how quickly it, you know, this is one of those, I always like to be told, I'm not charging enough, you know? That means that, that at least the price value must be pretty good. And, and you can always raise prices. We see problems when you put something up on the board and then aren't busy, and then get into the discount game. So, again, it's a philosophy, and we, we think, let's first get, get some play out there and then see where we go.
Same way with the daily pricing. You've got, I guess, greens fees in the first year ranging from $29 to 52, at least. I guess that's what you're proposing?
Yeah, but that's, I think the 29s in April, you know, it's when the course is not really at its peak, and then you go into peak, and then you go into, you know, you have these various seasons depending on, and, and when you go into the fall and football season starts, that's a whole nother thing. So, I mean, golf, you try to have, not, not have too many rates, because that just gets confusing. But it's also, as we talked earlier, to give all the residents a chance to play. And so hopefully, we'll have price points that work for people, you know, at all levels.
The, I noticed that there was, you're not planning on running the driving range? Can you talk a little bit about?
Yeah, well, the driving range actually goes across the 18th hole. And it's dangerous. I mean, you can do it at a private club when you tell people on 18, wait a minute, I'm hitting balls. But at a public course, we would never do that. And so, it's, the, the physical setup just not, does not lend itself to that.
Yeah, I, I, we talked, Rich and I should talk about this also. I think it's, as Ben said, I think that works-
Could you come up to the microphone?
Sorry, I think that, I think that works marginally at a, at a private club. And, and I mean, very marginally. It worked at a private club that was down to 125 members. So I, I think it's, it's the right decision not to operate the driving range. It's unfortunate. But there are also, there are also a lot of other alternatives that can be used for, for warm-up or practice, whether it be nets or short game areas. Certainly, simulators have become a very big and popular sort of replacement for ranges at clubs that don't have the physical space to do it. So I, I don't think that's really much of a drawback, and I do think it's a significant safety concern.
Thank you. So, we've talked a little bit about the facilities and how you're going to use the main clubhouse, at least to start. Are there any other structures or facilities at, on the property that you're planning to use going forward, except sort of the front part of the-
Well, the maintenance, the maintenance building we'll fully use, and the halfway house, which is down on property. And, you know, there's a little, little storage building, I think, of the tennis courts, that there were a couple golf carts in there today. I don't really know, you know, that'll probably be used for storage. And I think that's all that's on the property. So we'll use everything that's there.
Okay. I wanted to follow up on just a question about the business plan. Are you looking at the business plan down the road for West Orange? You know, there's this, you're only going to get the contract for 20 months, assuming we approve it. But you must be thinking that part of this is, you want to keep doing this-
Well, we're planning on it successful.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are in terms of keeping it an 18-hole course, or going to 12 holes, or nine holes, that sort of thing?
Yeah. I think that's all, you know, a financial decision of the, of the council, of the, of the town. You know, can it stay 18 holes and serve, that's, that's your call, not ours. If it, maybe the way to answer your question, we would be, we would not be surprised if it went to nine holes, or 12 holes, or whatever. You know, we run Skyway over here as a nine-hole golf course. We have, actually, our very first client was the Village of Vernon Hills, and they're still a client. And it's a nine-hole golf course. So I think that we anticipate there'll be change. We would, we would hope maybe there's a way to figure out to keep 18 holes, but not, not counting on it.
In your experience, what's been the impact in terms of rounds and revenue when you go from an 18-hole course to a 12 or eight, or nine hole?
Well, clearly, you know, you have, 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 half the capacity, and you, you charge a lower rate. Your, your expenses go down, not necessarily by 50%. It's a different customer, because your avid golfer chances are not going to be coming there anymore. So you get into more of your, you know, your beginning golfer, your junior golfer, the, sort of the segments that are beginning to learn the game. And, but, you know, with the time compression, nine-hole courses have actually become quite successful. And I think that, you know, when we talk about this at, at the office, we could see a 12-hole golf course, or a 13-hole golf course, whichever, you know, and talking about the architect, whatever routing works, you would price it accordingly. And I think you'd have some real interest. So that, that wouldn't scare us at all.
Yeah, I think one thing, sorry, I'll make sure I get to the microphone. I, I think one thing to keep in mind there is also that, as I alluded to earlier, and Ben just did as well, you know, the, the concept of, of reducing the number of holes requires some thought. You, you just can't take, you sort of nine hole, the first nine holes, they, they won't come in a loop back to the clubhouse, as you mentioned, halfway, that's a little bit out in the, middle of the property. So, you know, I, I think there are a lot of opportunities to be creative in the planning process. As, as a, as golf purist, we, you know, as someone who's a fan of Seth Raynor golf courses, it'd be a shame to, to see that lost. But I think there are ways to do, to minimize the damage. And I, I think there are certainly compromises that could be made. I think one of the, one of the issues with, with Rock Spring encountered is they, and one of the reasons it led to their, their sort of decline, was some of the changes they made architecture to the golf course weren't necessarily in keeping with that style. So you mentioned sort of the Frank Lloyd Wright, right? If you put red paint all over falling water, it's not going to look as good. So there, there are certainly opportunities, if, if you were to reduce the number of holes, to perhaps improve the quality of the remaining course, or pick and select the, the best holes out of that set. And so you might actually come up with a very, very entertaining nine or 12-hole golf course, or use some of that land potentially for, for short holes, for a children's golf course, for beginners. There, there are a lot of opportunities. But I think the one thing that's important to keep in mind is that, as Kemper is here on property, whether or not they'll, they'll sort of implicitly or explicitly are planning for down the road, they and we are going to learn a lot about what the golf course is, looks like on a day-to-day basis as a daily fee golf course. And we don't really have any of that information. You talked about sort of the rates you're setting for, for daily fee and for season passes. I, I think it's important to, for the township to keep in mind, and I, I want to emphasize, the, the tremendous difference in price that someone who was a Rock Spring member last year would have paid for access to the golf course. And then this year, to have basically the same facility at, you know, even if your rate is something higher than $2,900, or 50, whatever the, the 50, 75, whatever the, the daily fee rate is, you know, last year, for someone to put a tee in the ground would have been $15,000 plus. So the, the township resident is receiving quite a lot of value, I think, out of, at least those that play golf in the first two years, out of the conversion from a, a private course where dues were north of $15,000 to something where they might be able to have access, you know, for, for $50. The, we've also heard in, in conversations with residents, I think there's a bit of pent-up demand, people who are excited, who have never been there, and have always wanted to know kind of what's on the other side of the gate. I, I think you're going to, and I hope, that Kemper sees a, a tremendous surge, surge of interest here at the outset.
Thank you. Just another question. I noticed in all of the documents, or maybe I've missed it, that even though we're sort of partners in this, the, the process is for Kemper to provide monthly and then annual accounting of, of the expenses and the revenues. And yet, there doesn't appear to be any provision in any of the contracts, or the contract or the RFP, about giving the, the town the opportunity, or at least the right, to audit any of the financial or operational information that you guys provide. Is that, is that, I was going to ask you, is that typical when, in, particularly when you're doing business with, with municipalities?
Yeah, you know, we, we have a number of leases, and I don't know the audit rights in those leases. I, I deal with so many documents. I'll get you the answer. I just don't know the answer.
No, it's just, if you knew it off the top of your head.
I think there's two points here. One, and I'll yield to the, the experts. This is so electronically run, that by getting certified reports by the vendor, you know, again, we're not going to have a police officer or Mr. Lepore standing there counting, clicking it out. But they are electronic, because I, nobody more than Mr. Blake, who sits in, in Northbrook, Illinois, in Chicago, wants to make sure all the money gets in the till. So, again, besides the fact they're a national operation, I did put in my notes, I want to make it so clear to everyone, that one of the first things, when we saw this was a real possibility, is that the mayor and I went to Union County, that has Galloping Hill, which is one of the most successful public courses. And I can just tell you, from the legal counsel point of view, to the operational, to the county level, that the accolades for the way Kemper has run Galloping Hill and Ashbrook have been that it's all documented, that they, that they could never run it to the level that, that Kemper does. So I, I do believe that certainly for these 20 months, we're very confident that the amount of oversight through Mr. Cronheim and through the electronic reporting is, and with the fact that we're sharing at some level, is, is, gives us the safeguards.
Yeah, and I, I think there are a couple of safeguards built into the contract. First is that not just a requirement where they provide financials, but they have to be accurate financials. The certification from Kemper, I think, is a, is a backup. And as Mr. Tran alluded to, the, a lot of this is done through an electronic point-of-sale system. So there, there are means and methods by which this can be tracked, almost everything can be tracked. There's not a lot of cash, you know, changing hands. You know, and I, I think frankly, you know, that's, that's our responsibility to provide some oversight, but a very small concern, if any at all.
Thank you. One of the, one of the financial issues here is, is how the town basically is going to be repaying the expenses that Montclair Country Club is going to incur to bring the course out of winter into spring. And I was wondering, how was that determined that, that you folks were going to, I guess, fund the initial, the immediate repayment or of that? And then also, eventually, the township will be repaying those expenses as opposed to Montclair assuming them?
No, no, no. Maybe there's a misunderstanding. So long before we got to a vendor, the concern that was articulated earlier by the council president and others was, we didn't want to buy it if it wasn't ready to open. And we're running at breakneck speeds, and the whole reason we want to close earlier than April 30th is exactly for what I think people are indicating. Golfers are out there already. So the $61,000 was a heavily negotiated with Mr. Cronheim, with Mr. Keough, with Mr. Lepore, with Mr. Gross, as to the amount, because, because Montclair wasn't going to do any work. Montclair, as you will recall, said this is a real estate deal. And there was a lot of evidence that their mindset was cited. So the $61,000, and if you recall, from the contract with Montclair, Councilman Kocoviac, it's listed by week exactly what's going on at that course. So that's why some of the public are seeing what we're seeing now, that there's more and more people out there. So, and obviously, one of the things we're talking about is, if we close before April 30th, either to get a credit, and Kemper will take on that responsibility, or to have Montclair continue to maintain it through April 30th. So, so when you say, that's a cost of the operation. So they're advancing the money, so that Mr. Gross doesn't have to write the check. And then it's, we still get our 5% as our base fee. So again, if, as we hope, it does somewhere between $1,006,000 and $2,000,000, which may not be the number this year, then that, the town gets about $100,000. Then, they will get back as part of the operational cost, they will get back $30,000 this year, $31,000 as part of the operational. Again, Mr. Cronheim can comment if I've misstated it.
No, I think that's all, I'm sorry. No, I think that's all correct. I think it's, it's worth mentioning that we basically asked Kemper to front money for a month, well, for the, for the period of time from sort of the, whenever it gets warm to when the golf course opens. And there's no revenue coming in. So normally, you'd expect to be opening the golf course, there'd be offsetting revenue, you know, to offset that, the amount they were spending on maintenance. So it, it seems very reasonable to us, to, and we sort of, we very much appreciate the fact that they were willing to advance that money, so that Mr. Gross did not.
The, the point I was making is that, and, and I don't, I'm not putting the responsibility on Mr. Blake or, or you. But when this whole transaction was first discussed, there were multiple council meetings, there were, there were all kinds of discussions, that indicated, at least to my memory, that Montclair Country Club, one of the attractions of what we were going to do, was that Montre, Montclair Country Club was going to prepare the course. But there was never any time that I recall where it said that they were going to prepare the course, but we were going to pay for it. And that's why I was- but we were going to pay for it, and that's why I was curious to what...
I have a copy of the, I'm sorry, sir. I have a copy of the contract, and this was in every version of the contract. So the contract, and I'll find it as you go through any of your other notes, but this was not a, this is not something that came in after the contract. So I will find it for you and read it to you, but Mr. Gross, you're...
There's no question that was from the very beginning.
Yeah.
One of the many facets of this deal was the inclusion, because we wanted to make sure that it was pointless for us to buy a piece of property that was deteriorated, and we knew that we couldn't maintain it in the period, because we didn't know whether we were going to potentially be closing until maybe July 1st or June 30th. So all that period of time, that property had to be maintained, and we came up with the economics of that, based on that, and that's why, what's why within the contract, every day past April 30th, we were going to pay an extra amount of money...
$3,000 a day.
$3,000 a day in order for them to continue to maintain it. The $61,000 was the amount that they were, because as Mr. Trank said, their position was, we're not spending dime one on this property this year because this is just a real estate deal. So as part of the negotiations, and again, it was in there, in all of our discussions and our discussions with council as well, that $61,000 was to be paid, and we had made it clear to council, and this may be where the point of confusion, was is that we did not intend to pay that directly, that it was going to be included as part as the RFQ or the RFP for the operator to make that payment. And so indeed, that's what's happening here, and as making that payment, it is a legitimate expense to the bottom line of operating the club. So therefore, their reimbursement out of that, or our reimbursement in a sense, makes total sense.
Yeah, and I'll refer you, Councilman, that you can look at, I'm sure, online because it's been available to the public, to Schedule B, which is called Golf Course Meetings, and again, I'm talking about the agreement for the purchase and sale of the property that's dated April 4, 2019, and that literally has, week by week, what is going on with regard to the operation, and it specifically, and I'm looking at page 69 of the contract, says total cost for March and April, $61,308.75, which is exactly what Mr. Kronheim referred to, and which is what you're seeing. On top of that, there would have been exactly what Mr. Gross is saying, and it's in the agreement, a $3,000 per day expense if we went beyond April 30th.
The point I'm trying to make is that one of the attractions of this transaction was that Montclair Country Club was going to get the property ready, and that it would be a great benefit because we could hit the ground running. I don't recall in all of that discussion at the council meetings, and I really can't talk about executive sessions, that not that Montclair Country Club was going to do this as part of the deal, but that we were going to pay them to do that, and that's what I'm asking about.
You keep saying "we," and I don't know if you now have Mr. Blake and the township being married, they are paying it. The vendor is paying it. Within five days of tonight's approval, if the council approves it, they will wire to Mr. Gross $61,308.75. It's exactly what Mr. Kronheim said. At the closing, besides the money the township has to pay, the $11,001, that $61,308.75 will go to Montclair to reimburse them for those costs to get the course ready. So it's not the township. Then when we do the waterfall of expenses beyond the 5% base license fee that the township gets, they have a right to recoup that operational expense that they incurred prior to closing. That's what's always been in the contract, and that is what, that is the arrangement.
So we're really going to two points. I want to just address the first point, and then we can go to the second point. The first point is that I don't recall any time in any of the council meetings where it was said, Montclair Country Club is going to prepare the property, and this was an attraction, that we, the township, was going to pay for that, and I'm just wondering where that came up.
Yeah, Councilman, what part of "we," the township, is not paying for it? Am I not being clear to you?
The graphic that you guys sent to us today very clearly says that out of our supposed profit sharing, in the first year, we're paying $22,000 to reimburse KS for Advance, and then in the second year, we're paying $39,000 of that to reimburse KS for Advance. I'm just looking at the graphic you sent today.
But again, that is a reimbursement coming from the waterfall of operational expenses, Councilman, so it's not that... So first of all, again, I hope you will agree and will respect my representation to you, and I will hand you the contract. The contract with Montclair Golf Course has always had this in it, okay? So I have the page open, and I'll be glad to let you look at it, I'm sure you have it up on your computer. So again, what you're now talking about is the waterfall of how the revenues and how we get to where we hope we will share additional monies. What the mayor has always been clear is this will be revenue-neutral to the township. Preparing the course is a critical aspect to even having an opportunity to run a public golf course. So the $61,000 was always required, the vendor is paying for it, and the vendor will get reimbursed it from the waterfall of money that comes in. So it's not "we," it's the vendor, but yes, it is a legitimate operational expense that after our base fee does get, they have a right to say it's an operational expense, as Mr. Gross said.
Yeah, and if we had hired them back a month ago, and they came on board, they would have spent of their own money, you know, $61,000 to maintain the course, which would have been a legitimate cost that would come out of the profit. So that's exactly what's happening here. So it's not that we're paying, it is that it is, they're paying, it's more about the cash flow, they paid the cash upfront to have someone else do the work that they would have paid anyway, and that is included in the cost of, basically, the cost of goods sold.
I'm just looking at the chart that you gave us today, and in the chart, and this, the estimate is, for this year, the total revenues are $1.278 million for the eight months. Down at the line that says funds available for distribution, which would be the 50-50 sharing, is $22,000. The next line below deducts that as reimburse KS for Advance, and then participation to Citi, it says 50%, is zero, because we're giving our distribution to KS for Kemper, because Kemper has paid basically for Montclair Country Club. So I'm just wondering why it is that we were never told initially that we were going to be paying $61,000 to prepare the course?
Well, I guess a couple of things. First, the township is still getting its 5% gross revenue, 5% of gross revenues is its base fee. That's the, that's non-negotiable, that's what the township is going to get before anybody else, even if the operation loses money. You could gross a million-two and have a million-four in expense, it wouldn't matter. That's obviously not what we think is going to happen, but the township is getting its 5%. So again, I don't, I think Mr. Gross explained it quite well. If the township is missing out on anything, it's missing out on the fact that the golf course doesn't open until Kemper gets it open early May, so there should be some slight offsetting revenue for April, but there isn't, and the amount of revenue the township is missing out on, and township and Kemper is missing out on for April, pretty small. So I don't think there's, you know, if the golf course had opened April 1st, everyone would be paying, they'd be paying the $61,000 to maintain the golf course, charging it as an expense.
I think I've made my point. Thank you, Mr. Kronheim.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman. Because I'm going to move this.
Mr. Blake, you mentioned before about press releases and promotional things, that that's something that you enjoy doing, and as a, coming from a nationally recognized sports management organization, I see that as being quite impressive for West Orange, so I, just a comment, how would you, coming from Illinois, what do you think about the panoramic view of New York? How would that fit into your press release and promotional?
First of all, I have three kids that live in New York, two in Manhattan, one in, so I feel like I'm a little bit local, but that's part of the story. I mean, people see that, and you know, that's unique, that's as unique as the ocean at Bandon Dunes in my mind. And, you know, you've got, we've got an amazing story here with Seth Raynor, who's considered, you know, one of the top five golf course architects of all time. You know, the panoramic view, all the things, it's part of the story that you tell to get people to come, and hopefully they tell their friends, wow, you can't believe you saw that view, you didn't know it existed. So it's, I got to tell you, the first time I saw it, I thought, this is the deal. So I think there's, that's part of the whole, the whole thing, and part of the reason why we're here.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
So logistically, you will be setting up the website for the golf course?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess Mr. Sears will have to get that linked into the township webpage, and so you'll be handling all the marketing and the promotional?
All the marketing, exactly.
And, okay.
We do the whole social media, I mean, we really view ourselves as much as a marketing and sales company as a golf company. You assume we can run the course. We run 100 golf courses, and we run some of the finest courses in the United States. The real key is, can you market it? Can you tell the story? What's the brand image? You know, Rock Spring today probably has a little bit of a bruised image, you know, it's a club that didn't work for a whole variety of reasons, and it's a little bit like, okay, now what? So it's going to be up to us to create that image for the course and for the town and for, you know, what is it? Why should I come? And what is it, you know, what kind of story does it tell? So I think that's really something that we are very good at.
Okay, and hopefully we'll get to the point, because I know from Galloping Hill, I've purchased gift cards for Galloping Hill, so hopefully we'll get to that point. I'm married to one of those golf influencers.
Good news or bad news, you know?
The view of the parkway. Thank you for your time today.
What I'd like to do at this point right now is like, Mr. Rosenberg, and I can do that, okay, have all your questions been answered?
Yes.
Satisfactory, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. As Council, I would like to go out of concession, Madam Clerk, and I'd like to put this resolution before the board to vote on this resolution at this point in time, if that's allowable.
Absolutely. So it's okay with everybody?
Do I have a second? Do I have approval by the council to do that, to put this resolution forward?
Sure.
Are you making a motion?
Making a motion to...
Some vote.
Approved, okay.
Second. Resolution 113-19.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mathew Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Congratulations, sir. The Township of West Orange will be depending on you. Mr. Kronheim, we look forward to your input, and we wish you much success, as we've given you a jewel in the Township of West Orange, and keep it polished. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we continue with the consent agenda, please?
The Administration of Town Control, Resolution 105-19, there's still a reason to go into executive session on litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Resolution 105-19 has been removed.
Good night and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, hold on one moment. Okay. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, March 19, 2019.
Consent?
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of bids, communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Krokovia?
I just have some questions, I don't want to pull anything, so when the time is appropriate to ask questions, I'd like to do so.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
I also don't have any questions, but just a couple of comments.
Okay. Councilwoman Mathew Brown?
No, no resolutions being pulled.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Nothing being pulled, but I wanted to have comments on 111 and the grant.
On Resolution 111-19?
And 114.
And 112?
No, 114, the Senior Livability Initiative.
Okay, so you have comments, okay.
Just comments.
Council President, are you pulling anything?
I'm sorry, member?
Are you pulling anything this evening?
No, because they've been pulled, they've been duplicating, so...
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mathew Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Okay, questions? Councilwoman, Councilman Krokovia, I know, I made him a second before. Councilwoman Krokovia, your comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. On Resolution 101-19, which is the resolution authorizing an increase in the assessment for the municipal open space trust fund, I just wanted to get the numbers out to people so they know what might be changing in their tax bill, and it's a little bit funky in that the increase in the rate is not going to result in a, you know, the doubling of the rate is not going to result in a doubling of the tax that people pay, so, and maybe if you could just give the numbers for the average homeowner property, that sort of thing?
This is...
If you do this from memory, I'm going to be just so amazed.
Yeah, this is inside baseball. The current rate is .0025, which is four decimal places, but tax rates can only be calculated in three decimal places. So therefore, even though the rate is .0025, it translates to 003, and that's why it collects more money than it would if it was 0025. Nothing we can do about that, that's just the way the system works. We're now going to 005, which will now work, so we're really only going from basically 30 to 50, if you will. So that's why, that's why it's not double, it's just a, it's a function of that.
Rounding up.
So we, even though technically we were only supposed to be collecting a quarter of a point, we were collecting near a third.
Okay, so what would be the impact on the tax bill that the average person, the average homeowner is going to see? I know you've given me the number, I just...
Yes, we're going from, I think it was $10 to $16.
$10 to $16 annually.
My bill currently is $10.17.
Yeah, it'll go to like $16.
Okay, thank you.
And I did that for my...
Thank you. On Resolution...
Very good.
Resolution 102-19 is a resolution authorizing an executive session to discuss a matter of litigation, and it has to do with, according to the resolution, which is a public record, it says relating to the order to revalue, and I know we're going to be going into an executive session for this, but this is something that's going to potentially impact every homeowner in the town, and without impacting whatever we're going to discuss in the executive session, I think there's at least some public information that we can talk about in terms of what the county tax board has told us we got to do, and what the impact is, and that sort of thing, totally separate from whatever issue of litigation that we're going to talk about in the executive session.
Township has been ordered to perform a revaluation near 2022.
And that means that everybody's property value in town could change.
The debate that we have every, about 12 times every year about the differences between tax rate and tax amount is all impacted by the property owner's actual valuation. So all property taxes, all properties in the township during a revaluation will likely change and will likely increase, and it's a matter of what percentage one increases over the other will determine what percentage of the total taxes any one taxpayer pays, and that's what it's all about. It's about, it's about the allocation of taxes.
Right. I thought in a revaluation, you basically kept the total taxable property of the township stable, and some people's assessments go up, some people's assessment go down, but you sound like you're saying...
No, almost everybody will go up, but the question is, they won't go up at the same rate.
Right, I understand that.
So, because, and that's what causes the difference.
Okay.
I mean, it's, like, right now, we're at about, you know, 82, 83%, so that means the average, you know, our average taxpayer's property is actually worth about 20% more, round numbers, than what they're assessed. So that means the average, you know, our average taxpayer's property is actually worth about 20 percent more, round numbers, than, than what they're assessed at. So different properties, maybe some maybe 15, some maybe 25. And then that'll change how much they pay, their share. So this is all about a portionment of taxes. That's all it's about. It's not about anything else but that.
And Mr. Gross is an expert on this, so he perhaps assumes that everybody knows this. But under state law, the assessments of everybody's property are supposed to reflect market value as closely as possible. And basically what the, the county tax commission is saying is that, on average, we are undervaluing these properties roughly to the tune of about 82 percent. And that means.
Yeah, what, what the county does say, okay, you're now approaching an area where you really need to bring it up to 100 percent.
And this is what happened to us back in 2009, 2010, 2011. It cost us, I can't remember now, was it $150,000 to hire a firm to actually do the revaluation?
I wasn't here then, but I'd be surprised if it wasn't more than a lot. Could've been north of $400,000.
But at least that's, that's what, that's what's on the table now. The county tax board has, has told us to do this. And those of you who lived through it in 2009, 2010, 2011, that's what's potentially coming. I don't know what's gonna happen in the, in the executive session, but, thank you. And that's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Well, first, thank you for the administration, for that presentation. I, I found that very helpful and informative. So thank you for, for that. Couple things, a comment I wanted to say that, before I mentioned, I was a Sustainable Jersey Coordinator for West Orange. And a few years back, we accrued quite a few points when the police department went paperless on a lot of their reports. And now I see this resolution with purchase order processing, also removing the requirements for paper. So definitely have to make a note of that. Plus the drug takeback, that's good. And, but I'm wondering if the resolution for the AT&amp;T National First Net Plan, that there's considerable savings there too? If that's something we could actually discuss to see if it could fit somewhere in that Sustainable Jersey? Because that, our certification expires in June. And if there are points to be awarded there, I would like to find out.
Saving paper dollars counts.
Oh, there you go.
There you go, that's your answer.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, that, I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay, so I'm very excited tonight to announce that we've been awarded almost $80,000 grant from Partners for Health for our Senior Livability Initiative for our senior residents. With this, the grant, mainly, we applied for the grant so we could move forward and hire a Senior Livabilities Coordinator. And this person would be responsible for outreach amongst all our senior residents, trying to engage residents that are maybe isolated in their family homes, low-income residents, minority outreach, and multiple other responsibilities. This person probably gonna be located in the Health Department, will travel throughout the township. The grant awarded us a laptop for this person. That's part of the funds. They'll provide educational programs, develop overall a strategic plan for our Aging in Place initiatives, provide metrics on engagements of our residents, expand existing programs. They'll work with the program coordinators, the Recreation Department, the Health Department, and they'll be handling grant writing as well. So, very exciting. It's something that we've been discussing for the past couple of years here in the township. It's, it's a position that will pull everything that we've been doing in all our initiatives right together. And I really like to thank Director Teresa De Nova for all her hard work in putting the grant together, the administration, Susan Iovino, Patty Duffy, you know, just, I can't tell you how many hours was, was spent on this initiative. And working with our community partners, the West Orange Hispanic Foundation, the West Orange African-American Foundation, West Orange Unico, our school district, the public library, again, Recreation, all our senior housing wrote letters of support. We had about 10, 12 letters of support, St. Barnabas Health. They're also providing many educational programs that, to the township. So it's just really, really exciting and we're just moving forward with this Aging in Place initiative. And I know that will please many of our residents. Which leads me to discussion on the other grant, I'm sorry, not the grant, but for the proposed improvements to Jenny Dunkel Pool, item number 111. So as you all know, we all had approved monies to make improvements on the pool. And if any of you've been down there recently, I suggest you, you stop by, 'cause it's really come along really nicely. What a nice job. The new small building to where the residents will check into the pool is, is constructed. The, you know, they, they made room for the, for the handicap parking area, the drop-off area. So, you know, as Mr. Keough had explained to us a while back, you know, they'll be coming in and we're, a lot of our senior residents sit to the right side. And Mr. Lepore's here, so if he wants to jump in, but they excavated the wall and as you saw in the change order. Which really is neat, working with Mr. Keough. On another grant from ARP, has a 10,000 grant award and we're hoping to get that, is for a shuffleboard deck to put in the back of that area for our residents. A lot of these grants, to get little gold stars, to get these grants is you have to offer intergenerational programming. So he's already setting up tournaments with the, our students, our, you know, our children of the township to play with our residents if we get this grant. Also the game tables, as you saw, they're stationary game tables that have chess boards already painted on there. And so he'll be holding chess tournaments and checker tournaments and a lot of great creative ideas. So this is the, the direction that we're going in and it's, it's all great stuff for our residents. So I hope you could be supportive of those two initiatives. Going back to the senior grant, we had to offer services, which we already do provide as in regards to in-kind funds and also partly a financial fund. And you'll see the budget is on back of the, the resolution. So if you have any questions, just let me know. But very excited and very grateful to our township employees for all the hard work they did to get this much-needed grant for our residents. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ordinances on first reading, 2567-19, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-7.3, Temporary Parking Prohibition for Snow Plowing and Removal, subsection 7-12. Parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance, subsection 7-14.1. Night parking restricted, and subsection 7-14.7. Alternate side parking of the revised general ordinances of the Town of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Pending matters, new matters, and council discussion?
And my colleagues? Yes, Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So.
I'm sorry, was there any pending matters, new matters?
Oh, yes, I just wanted to, we received an email from a resident about, asked, a request to review the noise ordinance. I know we did just look at that again and it was front and center when we were discussing the errands on Eagle Rock Avenue. Is that something that we want to discuss or how do we handle that particular complaint?
A couple of things, I mean, I read the letter and, and it sounds like that woman has a neighbor from hell and I sympathize. I don't know that a change in the noise ordinance would fix that, frankly.
I guess, well, let me just ask this question, Ken. So when we were, and I was trying to make you the analogy when, even when I forwarded the email about errands and when the residents came out to complain about the noise too, they had the Essex Health Regional come out and that their decibel levels were different than our decibel levels. Is there any way to standardize that?
Has nothing to do with decibel levels.
It had a lot, what?
It has nothing to do with decibel levels. So the state has its state statute and regulations and they're the ones that were enforced with respect to errands, not the town ordinance. The town ordinance didn't come into play at all. She mentioned in her letter Manasquan having an ordinance. The fact of the matter is, Manasquan doesn't have an approved ordinance. It's unenforceable. Whatever it says. It's not listed in the approved ordinances by, by the state. Basically, the state has kind of preempted this whole area and we can't just create our own noise ordinance that has decibel levels. We have to use the model ordinance. And frankly, the, and if we were to enforce, do that and have a model ordinance to enforce, either we'd have to buy equipment, train people to enforce it ourselves, or get, have an agreement with the state, with the County Health Department, Essex County Health Department, to enforce it for us. We decided back in October, and I had actually prepared a, an ordinance to, to go to, with the model ordinance for the town. We decided not to go that route. It had made more sense to have the county people enforce the noise ordinance with respect to decibel level. They have the equipment, they have the trained people. We have a nuisance type of noise ordinance, which is very difficult to enforce. But we've tried in the past. It's been successful sometimes, sometimes it hasn't been. It's a proof problem. And we have that still on the books and we can use that. And she could've, if she called the police and there was noise like that, they should've done something about it. And in fact, some of the other things the fellow did, according to her letter, if they're true, he could've been brought to municipal court on 2C violation, so.
Okay. I'll reach out. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukoviac?
Yeah, what the, what the letter and my discussions with her basically said was that in Manasquan, the police have decibel meters. And the ordinance says if they record the decibel level, you know, at a certain place, that they can, they do a first, a knock on the door and a warning, and then if there's another reason to come back within 24 hours, they write a ticket.
Well, then, and we could do that, but the, and interesting, all my point was the Manasquan ordinance has not been approved by the state, so it's not enforceable. Until it's approved by the state, it's not enforceable. So they may have that ordinance. And, but if that, somebody has a good lawyer and, you know, they're not gonna be charged with that offense, so.
Right, but isn't that, don't you think that that's worth at least looking into is whether, why, why the state wouldn't approve the ordinance? It may be something totally different than, than equipping police with decibel meters and.
We'd have to both. That, that's a bigger deal than you might, than, it's not just a matter of buying the meters. Those meters, it's got training, and the meters have to be, I lost the word for a second.
Calibrated, maintained.
They have to be calibrated, they have to be calibrated regularly. So unless you have regular use of this equipment, most of the time what happens is the calibrations will fail. And then if you don't, if you don't, you don't do it on a regular basis, you don't necessarily maintain them like they should. And when you get into litigation or later on, you end up not being able to prevail because they, they haven't been calibrated. So it's expensive proposition to outfit and to maintain these, to maintain them once you decide to do that. That's, not that you shouldn't or can't, you just should keep in mind that that is, it's not, it's just as simple as, you know, buying a piece of equipment and say, go out and do it. There's a lot more.
Right, right now we have one person trained and that's Mike Fonzino. He's the only person who's got the training in how to use that equipment. We don't have the equipment. So we have to buy the equipment, we have to train more people because not gonna be able to necessarily get Michael Fonzino to come out to the scene, you know, where there's a problem. We just thought that it made more sense to let the state continue to do it. I spoke with Mr. Zwerling at the time, who is the expert on noise problems in New Jersey. He, and he's testified in a bunch of cases, and he suggested that it was better to have the state do it. If you wanna do it, you can do it, but it's, it's an involved process, it's costly, and it doesn't always make a lot of sense, so.
So her recourse would be to call the police?
Yeah.
But, but, but didn't you just say that basically calling the police doesn't do anything because it's, it's very difficult to?
People call the police all the time for noise ordinance problems and sometimes they're, we win in court, sometimes we don't. It's a subjective, the problem is, it's a subjective standard. Noise, it bothers some people, doesn't bother other people.
Right.
And that's just a fact of life. So, but frankly, her problem is, it's the noise, but it's also, I mean, a neighbor who has other problems, apparently. And I don't know how you solve that other than calling the police.
Right, and I certainly wouldn't suggest that we even look into changing this because of one person. But it certainly sounds like that there's at least the potential that other people could also be helped by looking into this. And I, I'm just throwing it out that maybe it's worth further discussion. What you're telling us tonight, Mr. Kizer, is very helpful. I'm just not sure that, that.
I think the argument that she was saying in, or the argument from the resident, or the offending resident, was that it was before 11 o'clock.
You could, you could change the time.
All right, but when your windows are rattling because of the, that's.
I talked to the chief today.
The simplest way to do it is, if you wanted to do it, is change the time.
Change the time.
Very simple.
That was, that was the request, but still, your windows are rattling at 8 o'clock in the evening. It's still.
That's a decision you guys would have to make.
Well, it's still loud. That's what I meant about the decibel levels.
The simplest and cheapest way to do it is to change the time.
Yes, Councilwoman?
So I had a conversation with the chief today. I've had some calls from residents last summer with some situations close to my neighborhood in regards to this and had conversations last summer. So as far as the ordinance now, if you rethrow it on the, it says in, in their annoyance as well. So it just doesn't have to be the level of the decibel, but, which gives them a lot more leeway in the, you know, the behaviors that are happening. So I, my, I had, I was gonna ask tonight and bring this up as well. I mean, the only part where I saw we could change the ordinance is maybe from Sunday through Thursday night, make it 10:00 PM. Because don't forget, we make a change if someone's having a graduation party or, you know, a family party. And most people are pretty considerate. A neighbor just calls another neighbor or just asks them to lower it. But chief did say that they get these complaints, they go there, if they have to go back, they, they issue summonses. So they are issuing summonses. There, some of them, the way it reads now, we, we could fine up to $500. So depending on the situation, but the situation today, 'cause I also talked to the person today. And this was also during the daytime too. So this has happened during the days, which isn't gonna help us with the time either. So before we change the time, maybe it's on the chief's radar. He was going, you know, to see what he could do on his end. And I explained to this resident, as I do other residents, they could call it in anonymously. 'Cause a lot of people don't wanna have that conversations with their neighbors. So they can call it in anonymously, which has been done.
Quite frankly, I mean, I've dealt with some of these noise ordinance problems in connection with some of the bars in town and I've dealt with, I've gone to neighbors' homes and talked to them. And one of the ways that you can resolve some of these problems is through the neighbors getting together and dealing with the problem from, on a neighborhood level. It's, it's not a, it's, you know, and I realize that can be hard sometimes, but that can be the most effective way to deal with a problem like that. Not enforcing some law with the police coming and very often that tends to escalate problems. But I think that unless you have somebody who's totally out of control, you know, neighbors will listen to their neighbors. If a bunch of them get together and, you know, have a sit-down and say, look, let's work this out.
So it's on the chief's radar, so.
Good, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I have some other, other issues. Mr. Sayers, I wanted to just ask you where, where things stand with the Essex Green Executive Drive redevelopment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the update on that. So I am very pleased to report, as I emailed you on Friday night, that Judge Bartels, who had the challenge that was filed by one community resident, did enter an order on Friday, April 5th, that dismissed the challenge to the designation by the Township Council that Essex Green and Executive Drive, the 70 acres, is an area in need of redevelopment. So we're still waiting for the written opinion, which I will share with you as soon as I have it. But that is excellent news. And with regard to the actual redevelopment plan, as I think everyone is aware, that's currently before the planning board. I think they've had one meeting on it and have another meeting scheduled to come up. I'm not, I don't know. I'm not, I don't know where that's at, but I...
April 11.
Councilwoman McCartney with them?
Yes, April 11. It's Thursday.
So, by the way...
A zoning board, yeah.
Zoning board.
So, so that's the exact status of, as I understand it, of Executive Drive and Essex Green. Meanwhile, of course, the, as you all know, the zoning board adjustment has the Essex Green application.
Right. There's, pending is the engineering review of 10 Rooney Circle. Is there any news on that?
Yes, lots of news. All positive. Iavino, Mr. Iavino's firm was retained at the recommendation of Mr. QB. I believe he is a, predominantly has his practice in the area of libraries. So, we got his initial report, but it hasn't been finalized yet because we wanted to make sure he went back one more time and did measurements to make sure, as he reported initially, that all the load, I don't know the exact terms, but I will get you the report. I have asked for it and have it no later than this Friday and I believe I will have it and I will circulate it the minute I have it.
Could you send us the report that you already have now, please?
No, I don't have a report. He had, he had draft comments, but he had to do more work. So, the answer is, it is not a final report.
Okay, so he's, he's filed an initial report?
No, I did not say that, sir. I said, "He is working on a final report."
No, I understand that, I understand that.
There's no initial report, okay?
So, I'm sorry, Joe, did you, your point about Essex Green, the planning board did hear that? Is that what you meant?
No, no, I was just wondering what the, what the update is on, on all of these different projects going on.
Yeah, I'll give you that. So, we'll get you the report from Mr. Iavino the minute it's done and final.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there, is there...
And so, the planning board did, did you want to hear this?
I'm sorry, go ahead, I thought I had the floor.
All right, then.
No, no, go ahead.
I was answering your question.
No, 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 answer his question.
About the Essex Green Drive redevelopment plan. It was heard before the planning board. It has, it was not approved because they're coming back with additional revisions that planning board members have waited. So, it's, it's a work in progress. It is out, but it's going to be revised.
Okay, thank you. Is, is there anything new about the Central Avenue redevelopment project?
By the way, there is one report and I don't know where you just took, we, as you recall, as part of, yeah, I believe, again, Shiny Engineering did a separate report about the HVAC systems on 10 Rooney. I don't know if that was specifically part of what he said, but is part of the analysis and that report has been concluded and that gets carried over. So, we'll get this to you, I believe, yeah, I submitted it to, I think the council has it, but I'll, we'll get you another copy.
Yeah.
That deals with HVAC issues.
Yeah, I don't recall that, but...
Okay, we'll get it to you. It's not a problem.
I could have missed it.
It's not a problem.
Thank you. Anything new on Central Avenue redevelopment?
Yes, yes.
Topping off party.
If you, so obviously, if you've driven down there, you are aware the building is, the site is as well-maintained as, as Mr. Trace says, that site is being maintained so well. The building is going up on Valley Residential and on, I believe, on, you've all been invited, April 26th, that Friday, which is going to be an historic day in town. At 11:00 AM, I believe, there's going to be what's called a topping off ceremony. I don't know what exactly that means, but basically, I think it means they button up the building and now they'll go in and do all the insides. So, that, that project, which as you know, is 100 units, 55 of which will be affordable, $3 million from the developer's fee funds at your, with your approval, have gone, are going into that site or will go into that site when it's fully completed and that project is on target and moving forward. As you also know, the Harvard Press site is fully rented now, 118 units in arm. So, with regard to Selecta Flash, which as you know, is what I'll call the third part of that row and which is owned by West Orange now, the, Mr. Sayers, I believe, yesterday got another grant application from, I think it's called, well, it's part of the DEP. You approved the application, but now it's been approved on a state level and I believe it was $46,000. That's all part of determining the scope of remediation that'll be needed and once, once Mr. Albert knows what the scope is, he's told us that the plans are in the works now and he expects to have them to the town, I think by Mayor June. So, then it would go, it would obviously go to the planning board for consideration.
Well, if I remember, and I, I don't, I don't remember the details, but I thought the way that we left it was that they were sort of, I don't know what the word is, tentative redeverber?
Interim.
Interim redeverber. So, do, do we as the council not make a decision about whether they are the redeverber or not or, because you just...
You absolutely do.
Okay.
They'll come back to you.
But you just said, Nick, I thought you said go into the planning board.
Well, it's good. It's a question whether it goes to the planning board here. I think it'll go, come here first. I think that's the correct order, but I obviously want to review it again. I don't have the agreement in front of me as we speak, but yes, I think clearly they're going to come in with a plan. Clearly, it's going to be residential and complement the neighborhood that, you know, the town is working on in that area. So, yes, you designate the redeverber.
Okay, and I don't know whether it's up to the council, but wouldn't the council have the opportunity to decide whether we wanted to get other plans as well? Because I think the way it was left is, is they have some first right to make a plan.
Correct.
But we have no reference point if there were other people who also wanted to present plans for the property. So, if we, if they come in and we just take that, we'll be deciding without knowing whether there is anything else out there in the open market of people who might want to develop the project and have a different vision or whatever.
So, but I think, yeah, we're saying the same thing in Essex. There, they get the first right to make a proposal. You get to review it and decide whether or not based upon their performance, whether that proposal is consistent and, by the way, there's already, I believe, a redevelopment plan there. So, the, the use of that site, the plan is already approved. Now, you could always say, "I want to amend it, I want to change it, I want to," you know, it's your plan, but they get the first right, as you correctly stated, to come into the proposal. And then, if you choose to reject it, I don't have the verbiage in front of me, so it's all...
Me neither.
But again, it is what it is. And again, if, if the council have an absolute right to, okay.
Okay, thank you.
And we are working, as you can imagine, there's nothing more important to the administration than creating a neighborhood down there. It's been foul for 30 years and so the sooner we can strengthen that neighborhood, which is what's occurring, is what obviously the administration is pressing and getting the environmental done is obviously the cornerstone, because until the environmental is defined, no developer will step into title. That's why we have title, because we have access to the monies.
Right. Is there anything new on library redevelopment?
And of course, I don't want you to forget, because I know you want to ask me about it, is that we acquired the Biddleman property, which is another terminus asset for what the township now controls. So, that's all part of what we would submit should be considered by the governing body when it determines the appropriations. You know, parking, as you know, the mayor's, police is important in that area, supporting Luna Theater and supporting what we hope are continued strength in restaurants and other uses down there. So, I'm sorry, you were asking about another success story?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, no, I, I hope, I thought you were finished. If you've got more to say, that's fine.
No, no, that's all right.
I think it's very helpful and very informative to people, so...
We're more than willing.
Okay. Library redevelopment?
Yes, so, library redevelopment, I believe, I got to yield again to our council liaison, Councilwoman McCartney, but my understanding, I'm going to yield to her first.
Well, yeah, that the study was again at the planning board. That's where we are, that's...
This council approved, as you know, of the, it's an area in need of redevelopment. Now, okay, so Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver on April 4th, 2019...
What are you reading?
Acknowledged, well circulated, basically acknowledged that they had gotten the resolution from the governing body and...
Designating the area and as...
Yes.
Okay.
Designating the area, green building. You should circulate that, because I haven't read that yet. So, net-net, the next step is the plan and my understanding, as you know, you approved higher rule to work on the plan. So, my understanding is they're now working on the plan for the library site, you know, contiguous to this site. As you know, because again, the mayor's been transparent on this, it does fit in to whether or not the 10 Rooney may be a viable site for the library, because one of the options is, the mayor believes strongly that additional senior housing is needed and that that used at the current library site in conjunction with a community center and in conjunction with an auxiliary library would be positive. So, the question or the issue there is what's a realistic development on, we'll call it the library site, either around it, above it, whatever the terminology is, to get certain residential units. As I think we've told you, at least one individual, again, no developer has been chosen at all, has indicated, and this is what higher rule is looking at, is whether or not it's possible to get approximately 60 residential units at the library site. But that, again, will be part of the, hopefully, what Councilwoman McCartney always says, like an overlay, that'll be part of the plan that has to be recommended by the planning board and then comes back to, to the council for approval of the plan. And then, once that happens, again, apropos of our discussion, then the town decides how to attempt to identify an appropriate developer for that development.
Right, I was just actually looking for a timetable, if you had one, for the next step, which would be the plan. I don't know...
So, we, we're waiting, we, when we, when we, when you at the last council meeting, if I have my timeframe right, we asked higher rule to prepare that plan against the planning board within 30 days. So, that's important. I will tell you, one of the reasons it's important is if we're going to attempt to get the, the project done on the library, the, the, in order to seek the 9% tax credits, which would make it a viable, affordable, as I understand it, and again, I'm repeating what I've been told, not from any independent investigation, there is a deadline for that application around July 24th. So, again, to the extent it's possible, and there's a lot of moving target, you know, moving parts on this, the goal is to attempt to get the Executive Drive redevelopment plan in gear and then get the library site to a point where a redeverber can be selected and that redeverber could attempt to seek the 9%, which would make it viable for affordable senior housing on the library site.
So, the executive drive plan was carried to May 1st, that's our next planning board meeting, and if you're talking about 30 days, then the redevelopment plan for the library should also be on the agenda then, not that it's...
Okay.
So, because the timeframes are tight, maybe Councilwoman, I think some of the administration has suggested that maybe the planning board should suggest to double up some meetings so we could get the public's input and move back, because eventually it has come back here. So, again, there's, time is tight.
Madam Clerk?
And last, but not, but not least...
Last but not least.
Another success.
I wanted to just get an update on the timing of the mayor's presentation of the 2019 municipal project. Please?
We don't have a date yet. We are in hopes that we're going to settle a few outstanding matters over the next week or so that will allow us to set a date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. We'll make a motion to adjourn and then go into the second session.
Yeah, we should adjourn the meeting and then we can go to executive session. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, West Orange. Thank you for joining us this evening. We hope you found it interesting and we hope to see you at our next council meeting. Thank you and have a great day.